I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. This is the Emeryville Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, April 23rd. The first item is the roll call.
Commissioner Cardozo?
Here.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Here.
Commissioner Gunkel?
Here.
Commissioner Keller?
Is here.
Commissioner Kamoril is not present. Vice Chair Tan has an excuse to absent. Chair Moss?
Here.
All right, the next item is public comment. So this is a time for public comment on items that are not on our agenda. So if anyone would like to speak, you will be given three minutes, and please come forward.
Hi, my name is Vicki Josul. I'm -- I live at 3618 Peralta Street in Emeryville. I've come to talk about Ambassador Laundry and your family-friendly plans for the future when you're deciding what to do for the next family-friendly buildings that go on. I'd like the city to plan for parking and safety in my neighborhood. They didn't plan very much about the parking for the visitors who don't park in the parking garage or the garbage they leave behind on the street. Peralta Street used to be cleaned by the City of Oakland, but now it can't be cleaned because there's cars parked there, and it's pretty encrusted dirt that just waits for the rain to send it down the storm drains to our bay. But -- so I'd like this buildings, when you put the family-friendly units, to be responsible for the garbage around their units, okay? So that's what I'd like for parking and garbage. I feel it has to do with safety. When you leave a neighborhood dirty, it's not a very safe thing. Unfortunately, in that building, I've seen people sell drugs already. I'll give you the license plate car and number of the young people who sell drugs, and I've heard them threaten to shoot each other while I'm in the community garden. I really think, when I was on the Housing Committee, you told me that it would be safe there, that you could deal with that, that that wasn't the criminal element that was going to come into the neighborhood, and I haven't noticed. That I feel the people who run the Ambassador Laundry are very friendly and nice, but very weak. So I need -- this is my suggestion, that every six months, you have Fred -- Fred, I don't know Fred's last name from the police department, he's a -- to come in and talk to the people in the building at their community center. It's common, you did it for Adeline Place. Then they know how to call the city police, they know how to -- what to do if they're threatened or if someone accosts them. So every six months, have a representative from the police go and talk with the citizens who live at Ambassador Laundry for their own safety. I think that would be a deterrent to the people who sell drugs there, the young people who -- young men who sell drugs there. Last thing I feel you have to plan for is you've made it a -- which I applaud, smoking is outlawed in that building, but unfortunately, legal marijuana, medical marijuana is not. And it's inexpensively built building, and you didn't design, whoever designed it, didn't design for ventilation very well. So every child, elderly person in that building gets to smoke with the people who smoke medical marijuana. You'll find there's a representative from the building there that will talk to the people in my community garden. Four people there complain to me all the time about the pot in the building, the smell of pot in the building. You've just got to plan ahead. What are you going to do with people who have a right to smoke legal medical marijuana? Maybe you have to have them in a better vented place. Maybe you'll have to consider that when you design these things. But it's something that you need to consider in the future and not just tell people, there's nothing we can do because they have a legal right to do it. Lastly, the person here from the building is disabled. You have to consider those -- the door at Ambassador Laundry is much like the door at City Hall, impossible for even a normal person to pull open. Imagine how hard it is for a disabled person to pull over a custom-designed heavy door. The elevators at Ambassador Laundry are only a year and a half old. Only one works now. Last weekend, peed in, broken glass, and no maintenance people during the weekends. So, plan ahead, maybe get better elevators on that design. Might ask for someone who really knows how to put in elevators. Plan ahead for people in wheelchairs that have doors that completely can let them go in, okay? Lastly, I'm going to say, if you're going to have people in wheelchairs, you've got to take those rugs out of there and just put linoleum down. It'll be much better for people in wheelchairs. So, these are my comments about family-friendly units, and thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are there any other speakers?
Yes.
Let me take three minutes.
Yeah, but Mary didn't set the timer.
Hi, I'm Abby. I'm a resident at the Ambassador, and I love it. I love my building. But there are some serious issues with the disability. The door is not opening. The elevators were broken for pretty much on and off for two weeks. There was no way for me to get in and out of the building, except for a back elevator. And then, once I went out of the building, I could not get in or out unless someone came to let me in or out. And none of the managers were available. I remember one time I called the emergency number for someone to let me in. I had to wait for four hours to get a call back. People are peeing in the elevator, which means my wheelchair is dragging it onto my carpet, so my carpet is now absolutely, positively unsanitary. And I can't clean my carpet every day. You know, I drag things from outside in, the elevator peeing. So, a thought might be considered putting video cameras in the new elevators. And like she said, too, the door does -- I have to pull the door open. And with my disability, I dislocate its joints. I pulled my shoulder out. I can't tell you how many times trying to get into the building to get to my home. And, you know, if anybody has questions about, you know, building a wheelchair unit, feel free to come over to my place. I can walk you through what needs to be changed. Because I can't always turn my head because my neck won't move. And they put a wall in my hallway, so it's like if I back up without looking, I actually D into the wall. And I've had to pay for repairs already and to put a metal protector on it, which was a lot of money. And it being a low-income building, a lot of us don't have the money to do this kind of stuff. I mean, if I get the carpet taken out, I have to pay for the carpet to be taken out, and I have to pay for the new flooring to be put back in. So, there's just, you know, and like I said, there is no visitor parking, so they park on the street. There is a dealer in the building that I have seen several times, and I've called the police, and they never -- he walks into the building the minute he sees them, so they never catch him. But, so if any, you know, if you guys have any questions about how to do a more wheelchair-friendly apartment and want to come over and check it out, I'm willing to show you.
I have one question. Does the building have security cameras anywhere that you know of?
They have them everywhere. I have one outside my door.
And so this person that's--
They just don't have them in the elevator.
But so this person dealing drugs has not been picked up on the video cameras?
No, he did them outside in his car, out of video range.
And there's no video cameras outside the building?
Not to my knowledge. I know they catch certain areas, but he, I think--
Knows where they are, probably.
Yeah. And I know he -- I know they get some federal tax breaks, and it's against the law federally to smoke marijuana. So I'm not quite sure how they're doing the medical marijuana thing. So, but those are just some concerns I definitely have, and especially with me dragging pee all the way to my apartment and in my carpet. It's not sanitary. And there was the glass, and that was picked up in my tires, and I've had -- I stepped on it. And so that's not safe either. So, and wheelchairs do get oil leaks, which I never knew until I moved in there, and this nice white carpet got oil leaking on it. Who knew wheelchairs got oil leaks? Found out the hard way. But, so thank you for listening, and have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Maru, do you have a timer?
Yeah, make sure there's a timer when Brian Donahue speaks. Other people don't need timers because they're allowed to speak longer, but undesirable, unpopular people, well, they do need a timer. Good point, Mr. Cardozo. Got to limit that undesirable speech in Emeryville. You know the program. I'm here to talk about family-friendly housing, except off the agenda. So I want to talk about it in a way that it's not been agendized tonight. I want to remind everybody here, why is it that we're trying to attract families to Emeryville? As far as I can see, there's two reasons. And I'd like to hear any other reasons if anybody wants to chime in, but first, let me throw my ideas out. I can see two reasons why we want families here. One is demographics. They're just, we have, it's just, it's nice to have a diverse citizenry in our town. And so families are part of, you know, it's human culture, and so we should have some of those in our town, some families. And so that's a reason why we want families. So I guess it's an aesthetic bias in favor of diversity. We sort of collectively have decided that's what we like, and you'd be hard-pressed to find somebody who would disagree with that, except for perhaps the exception of Mr. Cardozo. So we like diversity, so we like to see little children. We just like, just aesthetically like that, to have-- I would say that's the minor reason why we want to attract families to Emeryville, because there's a more compelling reason, in my view, and that is to support our schools. Everybody here went to school. We tend to like public schools, and with the exception perhaps of Mr. Cardozo. I think I'm joking. I'm not. So we want to support our schools. So the problem with the way we're calculating family-friendly housing right now, it has had a lot to do with, you know, mechanical design, but it doesn't cut to the way we're talking about family-friendly housing right now doesn't address the bigger problem that is how to -- we need to have the housing attract families that will go to our schools. The children will go to our schools. Problem is, if they're not, there's not, if the housing is not affordable, we can maybe attract families, but we'll attract upper-middle class families or maybe wealthy families. And then they, that's been documented, you can see that they don't send their children to public schools. Instead, they opt for private schools, generally. So, so we may be getting families with this type of housing we're talking about, but we're not going to be getting the kind of families that we want, which was the ones that will support our schools, which is the primary reason why we're getting them, want to get them here. It's not just because we like to see little children running around. It's also because we want to support the schools. So I say that the two are inseparable, inextrably linked, the idea of affordability and family-friendly. Those two, they must be connected, and there's nobody in this town that has made that connection yet. And I think, I'm telling you guys, I think you should make that connection. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? All right, seeing none, we will close the public comment and move on to the action recap. Are there any comments on the action recap from March 26th?
I think that we need to take the pledge of allegiance off if we're not doing it, so that should be deleted because we didn't. And on the 65th Street multi-unit residential, I believe we also had comments about the size of the rooms in the units being too small for family-friendly. And with those two changes, I would move approval.
Do we have a second? All second.
Without exception?
Yeah. Anybody have any objection? Nope. Great, thanks. All right, with that, we can move on to the senior planners' report.
Good evening, Chair Moss and council members, commissioner members. So I'm going to report on a few of the items that the council took on their April 7th meeting. One was on minimum wage. The council held a study session and gave direction to staff for preparation of a draft ordinance. The minimum wage for small businesses defined as 55 employees or less will be $12.25, and for large businesses will be $14.44 effective July 1st. They will be on parallel escalating scales that will converge at approximately $16 in 2019. The ordinance is to be introduced on May 5th and considered for final passage on May 19th. The second item that the council discussed was the Greenway. The council, as the successor to the agency, accepted as complete the Greenway improvements south of 59th Street, so the Greenway is now finished north of Powell Street to the Berkeley border. The council also approved the site cleanup plan and authorized the city engineer to advertise for bids for the 3706 San Pablo project that the commission approved earlier in the year. The council also approved an RFP for the design and installation of public art at the ECL project. In addition to that, at the April 7th meeting, the council approved the project Electric Rainbow by R&amp;R Studios for installation on Shellmount Street at the Powell Street underpass. Their contract will also include preparation of two imaging and themes documents, one for the public improvements and one making suggestions for adjacent private development, which will provide a conceptual framework for future public art and landscaping elements in the Shellmount district. So this would be relevant for some of the items that will be coming up later on today. At their April 16th meeting, and this was a special meeting in order to take a look at the 3706 San Pablo Affordable Housing Project, the council approved a ground lease disposition and development agreement with EAH Development for the Affordable Housing Project, which was approved by the commission earlier as well. At the April 21st meeting, the council held a study session on the status of the Climate Action Plan, and in terms of next steps, there is a new Sustainability Committee, which is a subcommittee of the city council, which will begin work on their work plan starting July 1st. In other news, as you probably know, we are going to be having a joint meeting with the city council and the commission on the residential development issues on May 2nd. The packet for this meeting will be distributed tomorrow and will be posted online tomorrow as well. The meeting starts at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday, May 2nd, and is to discuss regulations, incentives, guidelines for multi-unit residential projects to address the issues of unit mix, family-friendly design, affordability, ownership housing, and the bonus system. Food and childcare will be provided at this meeting. Thursday, May 14th is Bike to Work Day, so another reminder that a community bike ride is planned starting 8:00 a.m. in front of City Hall. This will be a short ride up to the engineer station on Adeline Street. Details are still being worked out, but do save the date and look for an announcement. And finally, I would, it's my regret to inform that the Mike Biddle, our city attorney, announced that he will be retiring this year. He announced that at the city council meeting on Tuesday. He is not going to, he'll be here till June 30th, and he, that's when his contract expires, and he's not going to be seeking a renewal of that contract. I know this, since Mike does not staff the commission, you probably are not too familiar, but he has been with the city for the last 26 years and has overseen pretty much all the negotiations and cleanup of all major projects that you see today in Emeryville. And on a personal note, I will say that I have enjoyed working with Mike, and I believe that it will be a huge institutional loss for the city with his departure. So that concludes my report. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? Well, Mike, I just want to say thanks for your service to the city, and we will miss you.
Thank you. Caught me off-guard there.
All right, with that, we will move on to disclosure of conflicts of interest and ex parte communications. Would any commissioners like to disclose anything? All right. Then with that, we'll move on to our public, our singular public hearing item for the night, which is the family-friendly, excuse me, family-friendly residential section of the design guidelines. Can we have the staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair Moss and commissioners. My name is Catherine Furtbo. I'm a housing coordinator with the Community Development Department. Sorry, let me get this up. And where am I? I always have trouble with this. Where's View? There we go. Why do I always have trouble with this? Nope. Right. Where? Here?
There, oops, one over. There.
Sorry. I always have trouble with this. We're here to discuss the amendment of the Emeryville Design Guidelines, including the residential section, and to create a new section on family-friendly housing design. I'm going to present the background information, and Diana Kena will discuss the guidelines. Our consultant, Arnold Mammarella, will discuss the unit designs, and then Diana will come back up and talk about the next steps. Currently, the family-friendly design is in the residential design section of the design guidelines, and it has one subsection, J22, that applies only to projects that are seeking bonus points for family-friendly housing, and staff is proposing a new, more detailed section. We are also proposing some additions to the existing residential design sections that will apply to all residential developments regardless of whether they're seeking bonuses or not. Currently, the family-friendly design, oh, sorry. The changes that we are proposing are about making clear what design features Emeryville would like, would consider that makes residential projects and units family-friendly. Not how these guidelines will be used or how the guidelines might affect affordability, but the actual, just the design features that we think make the project and the units family-friendly. That being said, I do actually want to talk a little bit about affordability because it gets talked about a great deal when we talk about the design guidelines. So, first, I want to talk about 100% affordable units. With 100% affordable units, the city has a whole process that they use to set the program for the affordable project before we even identify a developer. Then a developer is identified, and it's a team process throughout the rest of the project development and getting the entitlements. And the idea is that we work together to meet the goals of getting the project built, but also to meet those program goals that we had in the onset. And we, and we work together, depending on what funding is availability, to adjust whatever the program is, which we did quite effectively on 3706 San Pablo. The second is that when we develop affordable units particularly, we're looking for outcomes for the tenants for a long term, over five decades, 55 years of affordability. So when we talk about the design of those units, we're really talking about the outcome for the people who live, the general outcomes for the people who live in those units. Multifamily housing is a long-term investment, and, you know, a lot of the market-rate multifamily units that are being developed right now will not be redeveloped in, you know, in any timeframe that, you know, we can imagine in our lifetimes. But it's very difficult to remodel multifamily housing, unlike single-family homes where you can say, "Well, I want to add a bathroom," or "I want to push this wall and make this bigger and make this fuller." It's really not an option in multifamily housing. And so, as a city, we need to make sure that we have the best designs with the most of flexibility, so that if there is a demand change for family-friendly market-rate housing, that the outcomes of those tenants have been considered in the design of the units. This is why we're here, why we're talking about this in such detail. And the third is that there's a lot of talk about affordability and the family-friendly guidelines, but I just want to make the point that for-profit developers charge the rents that the market will bear. They don't sort of think, "Well, this unit's for families, and I'll charge this," you know, either more or less. They simply charge what the market will bear, and they try and maximize their profit. And we are here today to sort of discuss what we want to see as a community out of this process. On May 2nd, there's a, as Maru mentioned, there's a special joint planning commission and city council meeting, and we'll discuss the affordability, the unit mix, tenure, and how we use the bonus system to address all the goals within the city, of which family-friendly is one of the goals. So, today, we're discussing, as I said, design. Emeryville adopted design guidelines in 2010. In 2011, the relationship between the needs of family and children in schools and the housing that was available was discussed, and we had a MIG create a report on family housing design. In 2012, EDH developed a report on family success in affordable housing, and that included sections on neighborhood, project, and unit design. We used that report to develop a checklist for the 3706 San Pablo Family Housing RFP, and that process was a huge success. Many of the proposals that were given, not just the EH one that you all saw, but we actually got nine proposals, and many of them had very interesting responses to that checklist. And we learned a great deal through that process. And actually, we've adapted some of the EH during the entitlement process. We went back, and we looked at EH's design, and we sort of adapted it and found kind of the best things that could make that project work better. And that's what I mean by that whole collaborative process that we use to get the best affordable housing project that we can. The city decided that the current subjects in the residential design guidelines needed to incorporate the lessons that we learned from that process and to make it clearer what we were looking for in family-friendly market rents, units. Out of this process came some points that would make the all residential projects stronger, not just the projects that we're talking about, their family-friendly units. So, there is actually some changes, as I mentioned, to the residential guidelines that will affect all projects, not just projects that are talking about family-friendly. And then in 2013, the city adopted planning regulations that included bonuses for family-friendly units, which is one of the reasons why we need to have a more detailed description of what we mean by family-friendly. So, the process has been going on for quite some time, as I mentioned. So in June of 2013, we came to the Planning Commission for a hearing. And if you'll recall, there was some comments, and we were asked to go back and have some architects look at the designs that we had brought forward, the design guidelines that we brought forward. So, that actually, there was a specific architect at HUD that we were trying to get to comment. We weren't very successful. He had some issues making those comments internally. So, we actually put it out to a bunch of affordable housing architects, and we got comments back on the draft, which we actually added their comments into the draft. And then in March in 2014, as part of our housing element process, we actually had Affordable Housing Developers Roundtable, where we discussed the family-friendly housing. And it was, it was very positively reviewed, and they were actually, made comments about how our RFP process brought up some issues that they hadn't thought of before, and that they were going to incorporate in all their projects, not just those in Emeryville. So it was, you know, it's been pretty successful so far. We hired an architect who's here tonight to work with us, make comments on the draft, and to illustrate the guidelines. We brought it back here in February, and the hearing has been continued, so we're here today to finish that. We also took it to the Housing Committee after. We took it to the Planning Commission, and we got their comments. Their comments were almost very similar to what the Planning Commission had, and they had a couple more that were incorporated into the draft. So today, we'd like to consider adopting these guidelines. And then on May 19th, if we adopt them tonight, they'll go to council for final adoption. I do want to make a couple, there's a couple of slides here about families in Emeryville. In absolute numbers, the families in Emeryville have been increasing as the housing units have been increasing in Emeryville. But in addition, the percentage of family households has also been increasing in Emeryville. And with that, Diana's going to come and talk about the process.
Catherine, do you have figures for the county? How we compare with the county in terms of--
So you will see that on May 2nd. When you see that, you'll get your staff report. There's actually a great deal of detail on comparisons to other jurisdictions and the county, and I think even the state, right? It has some-- county, and I think even the state, right, has some information, so you'll have a lot of data.
Set aside some time to read that staff report.
Okay.
So this is what happened. We came to you in February. You told us that the Design Guidelines should have balance and flexibility and show options, and you made some specific comments. Don't say kitchens should be on the interior wall; they might not always want to be. Minimum unit sizes should be flexible so they don't impede affordable housing development. Don't say distinct living and dining rooms. Show a great room and a room with walls in examples both ways, and just say that there should be enough space for the dining table. And so we did a little more than that. Specify that enclosed entry for years are only recommended where units are entered from interior corridors. Don't require balcony, deck, or patio for each unit because the planning regulations allow developers to trade that for common open space, and that might be better in some cases. And where we talk about shallow uses, we -- shallow units, we should say where feasible and show an example of a good deeper unit. So we've responded to all that, you'll see in a minute. And tying all this into bonuses, affordability, unit mix, and ownership, that's going to be addressed on May 2nd. That's where we talk about how to use these guidelines. Today, we talk about what they should say. So here's what we've done in response to your comments and those of the Housing Committee. In the Residential Section, the section that applies to all residential development, we've only made two changes. We added text that in long corridors, we should define entries and break up the walls using lighting and articulation of walls and ceilings. And we deleted that unit daylight and aspect diagram because it just seemed to be too confusing, too much. And in the family-friendly residential section, the section that currently only applies to people who want a bonus, that's where most of your comments were. We deleted the requirement for distinct living, dining, and kitchen areas, and we have an example with a kitchen at the window. And the guidelines for dining and living areas specify dining room space for a table and everyone around it, and circulation, and living room space for seating for all and circulation. So it doesn't say anything about separation. We deleted the requirement for balcony, deck, or patio, and we have a diagram of a unit with -- that doesn't have one. We improved the language of the laundry guidelines, so it's a little more general, instead of just listing examples of where laundry could be. And we have an example unit that doesn't have laundry in the unit. And instead of having a four-year requirement, we just said, "Let's have the front door enter into a transitional space rather than in the middle of the kitchen or something." And one thing that wasn't in the units, and this came from the Housing Committee, was that we should say play area should be ample and have a variety of equipment, because we have a history of some that didn't. And we took out the square footage. We figured that if we need to specify anything about square footage, that could happen in the regulations. Numbers like that are generally best off in regulations. And now we'd like to have Arnold Mamarella come up and walk you through the diagrams.
Diana, could you just go into a little bit the explaining, the way that the guidelines work as opposed to the regulations, where they get enforced and how they get?
Excuse me?
Just wondering about the process of regulations versus the guidelines, just for clarification.
What's the difference in how we use them? Oh, okay, yes, very good point. The guidelines are code. They're legislation, and to do exceptions is a big process. The purpose of -- that's what -- did I say guidelines? That's what the regulations are. The regulations are in the Emeryville Code, and you have to follow them or get an exception in a very formal process. The purpose of guidelines is to help people know what we want to see in design, and you do have to follow the spirit of them, and if you don't follow the letter of them, we do question, and we want to say, "Well, what's your justification for not following it?" But it's not as formal as if you don't want to follow a regulation. How's that?
Yeah, I understood that part. I think I'm thinking more of things like the guidelines that say have adequate ventilation and things like that, how that comes. That's not something we generally are looking at up here.
There are some things in the guidelines that I remember the planners saying, "How am I going to do that?" We can do it in conditions of approval.
Okay.
That particular point is one that one of the architects brought up.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Mamarella.
Hello, and good evening. It's -- what I would like to do is talk through the changes in the diagrams that come with the guidelines tonight, and to kind of give you a sense of the process that we went through since your last meeting in coming up with these changes. This first set of diagrams is part of that, in that in the last go-around, we didn't really have some of the issues graphically represented in terms of family-friendly design, in terms of units that are being built, or units that have been planned, and whether those achieve some of the family-friendly objectives that are laid out in the written text. So we went back, and one of the things we did is we started with illustrating some of those conditions and finding out where they did and did not meet the guidelines that are in the writing. So what I'd like to do tonight is go through that first, and then go on to the examples that you've seen that have changed since last time of different unit configurations. And of course, you know, there's so many ways to configure units, and we don't want to imply that those are the only ways to do it, but there are examples of things that respond to the points in the guidelines, the written points of what family-friendly would look like. So on this page of the guidelines, the purpose is to kind of illustrate some things that are happening, and what things are not meeting the written language, and what's really going on here. So mainly, what you see is that living areas have become very sort of kind of constrained in multifamily housing units. And for example, the two-bedroom, two-bath dual-master flat that you see, you notice that the living area has the living and the dining area. The dining table has been placed in that area, and you notice that there's not adequate room for both functions and circulation around that. And so you really have, like, what says A/B? It's because the living and dining are put together, but there's really only room for one of those functions. So that's really the main thing, is more area has been put into bedrooms and other rooms out of the total unit square footage, and as a result of that, you're getting small areas for living. Now, when we get to the bigger unit, like the undesirable example for a three-bedroom, we'll come back and show that, comparing that to one of the ones that we put for desirable units, but you'll also notice that the living and dining areas are very tight, and that there's insufficient area for the number of people who live in the unit. So as we went through this process, we looked at the number of bedrooms in these units, and how many people that would result in perhaps, and then we sort of said, "Well, we need this much furniture." And that really drove a lot of this, along with some of the other issues of how to organize units to be family-friendly. A couple of things happen in these units to point out. I know you can look at the diagrams and read them. Sometimes you get awkward circulation patterns and things like that in units, and as a result of that, you're getting, you know, circulating from bedrooms back to kitchens to get to bathrooms, or just circulation cutting across spaces and making it difficult to furnish those spaces. When people furnish a unit, I mean, they're not interior designers, so they have to come at it from a point of view of what they know to do, and they're going to work with it the best they can, of course, but in looking at some of these units, they've become very difficult to furnish, and there's very few options and very little area for putting in the adequate furniture. So what you're seeing is configuration issues coming up, as well as just the size of the living area is being very, very restricted, and then the entry area is not having enough space for strollers, not having enough storage space, things of that nature. Lastly, to point out on these locations of decks where they do occur, they're often being put in front of a bedroom, and it's off to the side of the living room. So they're not really an extension of the living room, but they're more off to the side. So that wasn't seen as a really good kind of physical arrangement of those spaces. So there's a whole list of things here that these examples are conflicting with the written guidelines, and no place study areas, no flex, not a lot of flexible areas, things of that nature. So we just wanted to sort of put that in there so that that can be looked at as we look at using the guidelines with the other examples. So I'm going to move on to the other examples. How do I do this?
Can you speak a little louder, please?
Okay. Sure. So I'm going to move on to the other examples. So we have two sets of diagrams. We have the one-level diagrams, and we have the two-level diagrams. One of the big things we heard is to get more diversity in the unit types. We also heard public comments about unit configurations and how practical they were. So we went back and modified the units. On the single-level units, we kept Example A fairly similar to what it was, a couple of very minor adjustments. This is a two-bedroom unit with the kind of a projecting bay element that you see, and it incorporates the -- all the ideas that we would want to see in a family-friendly unit. We have a corridor for kids to run in. We have a study area. We have a space for dining, a space for living, terrace, and an entry off a corridor that is somewhat sheltered and not into the kitchen. We have all those elements in about 1,100 square feet. As you travel down to Example B, that is a new unit. One of the issues that came up is trying to get a deeper configuration to a two-bedroom unit, and in this case, we did make it deeper and tried to keep it pretty similar in square footage but make it still function. It did end up being a little larger. We wanted to try to get all the elements, and we wanted to get some diversity. So you'll see in this unit, most of the elements are there. The deck has been moved to between the children's and parents' bedroom rather than just in front of the child's bedroom, and since it's a deep unit, there's always a concern of getting light in, so we tried to look at it from a building configuration point and saying, "Well, maybe that next unit should be notched back or stepped a little more light into the deeper unit." So those were some of the considerations, along with getting all of the furniture into the unit, and the total square footage ended up being a little bit more, but kind of in the ballpark, because we're always trying to not add too much square footage. The C and the D examples are the three-bedroom examples. Now, those were wider and shallower, so we tried to really narrow them so they weren't as wide, and to still make them functional. We also had comments about not always having the kitchen on the interior side of the unit. And in our discussions, we said, "Well, you know, that really makes a lot of sense, especially at the ground-floor units often," where especially if you're on a courtyard or into some area where children might be playing, to have a kitchen maybe looking back into the space. But on the upper floor, it becomes much more challenging. So what we did was, we kept the kitchen against a service wall, but we reconfigured the unit so that we had a fairly ample area for the kitchen to look into the dining room and then look into the living room, but still keep the living room large enough that it would function for the number of people that you would have in that unit. And so in Example C, what you see is the kitchen is sort of looking out towards both the dining and the living area. It's open to both, but there is still a clear place to put the dining room table without it interfering in the circulation or in the living room furniture, and also popping out a little bay or something like that with the deck, so that you can have like little extra area for some sort of flexible use. What you notice is the bedrooms become a little bit smaller perhaps, some of the secondary bedrooms, but they're still kind of wide enough to function. If they function, you can put a bed and put a table or dresser across from the bed on the opposite wall. The D example, we wanted to get diversity, and this was a place where we thought we could do the kitchen looking out to the public space on like a unit that was on the podium level or on facing a courtyard or something like that, or at a building end. So this works best at an end unit or corner unit, because it's really difficult to do without making the unit very, very wide to get the kitchen facing forward on a kind of an inline unit. And so in this case, it was a corner unit, and we added the idea of putting in the eat-in kitchen. So there was comments last time about, you know, how single-family houses work and some of the features that make them kind of friendly to families. So we tried to pull some of those ideas into this, where the kitchen looked out onto the living area, but the dining room table was actually in the kitchen, and that looked out onto a patio, still making sure there's adequate space, and we had an exterior entry. We did keep the interior entries, because the developers seemed to prefer those on these larger buildings. So this essentially has two entry points, interior and then exterior for visitors, and it may be the building configuration will affect that a lot. This one also has a study area. One of the big concerns was children, when they're small, have certain set of needs. Children, when they get larger, have other sets of needs, and we tried to be aware of that and start to think like, "Well, how would that play out over time?" And consider unit layouts that didn't force people to move from one unit to another because their kids are now going from little toddlers to getting a little older, and trying to look for ways to incorporate some ideas for study and things like that in units that allow that to happen, so people aren't shifting units and possibly moving out of the city. So this example is trying to create some more diversity and to look at the ground-floor unit. So I'm only going to move on to the next one. The two-level units, we showed three two-level units. We had three before, but these are ones the same. Example G, you've seen that before. Example F is a revision on one, and Example E is a new one. So one of the things with the diversity we're trying to do is bring in more options for units. Townhomes, two-level units, people seem to like those to get the bedrooms on the upper level. We're seeing in larger buildings, this example of E, which shows essentially a townhouse is put into the front of the building, it's kind of embedded into the front of the building. You've seen that before on recent projects. We're using one of those projects, the sort of the dimensions as the basis for this one. And what we're doing is, we're just showing how that two-bedroom unit would look on a street level or on a pedestrian U, where you have ample space for living and dining, and where it's sort of, there's an identifiable place to put things, and the entry has some definition, but it's open also, and then the bedrooms, of course, are upstairs on that. So it's pretty straightforward, but just getting all the functions to work in that type of shape, which is a little bit of a different shape because it's a square shape. The Example F is a little bit of a different story here, so I'll try to explain what the thinking was. Another example of diversity. We took a unit that could go on an upper level but still be a two-level unit. So it's corridor access on an upper level. In this case, we moved the balcony, so we'd have options without balconies, but instead of just leaving the balcony off, we replaced it with sort of a small room. You can call it a bonus room, a playroom, a flex room, an office, home office, whatever it may be. That's the G, and it's off of the foyer coming in. So this unit has requirement to have a half-bath, accessible half-bath on this unit on the lower level that's been put in there, storage area, and having this kind of flex room that could kind of move over time into different units as the family grows and changes. And then the living and dining kitchen are also relating to each other, they're visible to each other, and then the bedrooms are upstairs, and the laundry's upstairs. So it functions in a way that is both similar to many of the other units, but also with a slight difference in having this kind of zone at the entry and the office space, which could be a little bit different style unit. Lastly, the Example G is a townhome that is entered from the public way. It does not have elevator, it's not for off of elevator access. You could stack another unit above this and have elevator access to the units above that, have like stacked townhomes. This one is different in that you have a typical townhouse arrangement, where you have essentially the walls at the front and the back have windows. essentially the walls at the front and the back have windows. So it's much more like the row house example. And this one, it's a little bit bigger unit, it's four bedrooms and it does have some division between the living and the dining. This is the only one I think has more of a solid wall between the living room and the dining room because the kitchen is between those two rooms. Other than that, I think it's pretty self-explanatory and you've seen it before. So just to go to the one next, the one last slide I'm going to show you. So this brings us back to a comparison between this two-three-bedroom flats. These would probably be the most common units for family-friendly, the two and three bedrooms in the one side exposure, single aspect or inline unit. And when you put them side by side, what stands out is they're about the same size, but the amount of living area is much larger on the desirable example than on the, what we consider the undesirable example. So there's more room for living and dining and kitchen. Kitchen's bigger, there's an island. Dining has space, there's space for circulation, ample space for furniture. And the unit lays out a little more efficiently just because of the proportions of the unit. And probably that's a good place to stop unless there's questions.
Then I can continue.
Okay. No, it doesn't matter. In all the units...
Can you use the mic?
Oh, sorry. In all the units, the requirements for accessible design have been considered in all the units.
Thank you. See if I can do this right now. Okay. So there's one little quirk here. You have to do, in order to adopt the design guidelines, we have to amend the planning regulations because in the bonus table, it says in order to be eligible for a bonus for family-friendly units, you have to have end-unit laundries. And as we, actually, the thought came up when we were doing our tour of the good affordable projects. A lot of the developers said they really like having the communal laundries, not only because it saves on cost, but also because it creates a social space. So we wanted to have that option and not rule it out. So in order to make the regulations consistent with the new guidelines, we need to amend the regulations. So that's what that's about. And that's in your resolution. So next steps to repeat, we will take this to the planning, to the city council on May 19th, the new family-friendly section, which applies to people seeking bonus points in additions to the residential section, which applies to all residential development, and initiate the amendment to the planning regulations. And then on May 2nd, we'll have the joint city council planning commission meeting to talk about multi-unit residential development regulations and incentives about affordable units, unit mix, ownership, and do we want to redo the bonus system? And that's where we'll talk about how to use these design guidelines, how to apply them. So that completes our presentation and we will all three be happy to answer any questions. And we have a few other slides in case you ask questions about what the earlier drafts were or things like that.
I have two questions. If, would these guidelines, would the council consider these guidelines if it didn't require a change to the planning regulations as well?
Yes.
Or is that the primary?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, so I would imagine that if we were to then recommend approval of these guidelines, that these are on a, these are on a schedule, I think it was, what, May 19th to go to the city council? So that these are on a schedule so that a lot of the current projects, which we would be considering, you know, fairly soon, would then be evaluated under these guidelines, which is, and not necessarily under some of the, you know, some of the ordinances or regulations that might result as, that might come as a result of our May 2nd joint meeting?
Yes. This is on a faster track if all goes as planned. We'll be, if it goes to the council on May 19th, then actually the design guidelines are adopted by resolution. So they'll go and they don't have to have a second reading. Yeah.
I have some questions for you. So can you go back to the previous slide, page 15?
Uh huh.
Okay. So my understanding is on our meeting on May 2nd, we need to go back one more. There you go. We're not only just talking about these five items, but the items that we're discussing tonight are also going to be discussed. Is that not correct?
The planning director is attempting to focus the discussion on those items because, as you can see, discussing the design guidelines could take a whole other several hours. So if we can get the content of the design guidelines, which have a lot of details hammered out here, then we won't have to spend time on them at that meeting. There's plenty of other things to talk about. We will be talking about how to use these, how to apply these with the bonus system or with the unit mix or regulations or incentives or whatever.
So generally, what we're discussing tonight and passing by resolution won't be discussed at the council and commission joint meeting?
Probably not in great detail.
Okay. Because I felt tonight that what we were doing was putting the cart before the horse. That if we were going to have this, we're having a four-hour meeting with council and if we're going to discuss this, but yet we've already passed a resolution, it didn't make a lot of sense to me.
Well, what the planning commission is doing, what we're asking the planning commission to do is to recommend council adoption of this and the May 2nd meeting will happen before the May 19th council meeting.
Right. And so at that meeting, may we not finesse this or have the opportunity to finesse what we're doing tonight and get, you know, a broader consensus?
If people have something to say about it, it can be discussed then.
It can, since we passed...
Worried that people are going to have big changes in light of the things they're discussing on May 2nd?
I think it's possible. I, well, in reality, it's probably not possible, but I think that the discussion should be had to a larger audience. To me, so if we pass this resolution tonight and we talk about it at the May 2nd meeting and there are some things that are agreed to be changed, do we have to start the process over again and go back and rewrite the resolution and pass it again?
No.
The city council...
Because you'll be at that meeting. You can say anything you want at that meeting.
Right. So if something comes out of that meeting that changes the language in the resolution that we passed tonight?
Well, the resolution just refers to the guidelines. And then it goes to council. I mean, a lot of times, something happens in between the planning commission meeting and the council meeting and then the council adopts the final thing.
And that, between the 2nd and the 19th, the final draft can be changed or modified?
Could be.
Yeah, okay. Because that's what my, I was afraid we were going to make something and then set something in motion, then change it on the 2nd and then have to go back and start this process again.
Well, the need to change it on May 2nd, you can.
Okay.
I noticed that the housing committee, one of their comments was tying the universal design to the family-friendly design guidelines.
Yes.
And I didn't see anything in...
That is because the building code requires all units that have access by a flat floor, a level floor, or an elevator to have adaptable design. So we felt like the building code addresses that.
Are there any other questions, staff?
Public comment?
All right, yeah. So thank you Diana and Catherine and Arnold. And with that, we will go ahead and open the public comment on this item, so, or the public hearing, rather. So if anyone would like to speak on this item, please come forward and you'll be given three minutes.
Would you like to speak on it? Overhead projector working, please.
I can do it.
You're with me for a moment? Got a big shadow across it here. I guess that's what we got. Is there any way to zoom in on these diagrams? Oh, no, okay. Okay, oops. Sorry. Oh, wouldn't you know it, I have my notes on, okay, all right. Okay, I apologize, so I'll have to go back. All right, I have a couple of quick points here. We need to test ability. We need to find out about the metrics of this. And I asked somebody, I believe it was Ms. Furpo, several months ago, about how do we know how we're doing vis-à-vis family-friendly housing? So we're building it. Are families actually moving in or are they just students renting out each room to other students? That's common. So insofar that we can test to see how we've been doing, we should be doing that. I think you should, you should be asking that. And I never have gotten a straight answer on how we can measure. I've been told the only information that we can get and use is US Census information. And then I've also been told that we can in fact talk to developers about, not names necessarily of who's renting apartments, if they are apartments or buying apartments, but if we can ask if they are being inhabited by actual families. So I don't know if you've done any work in that regard, but we should start doing that. In other words, get some data so that we can find out how we, how well we've been doing. Testability, metrics. Okay, another thing is this, this whole thing, not talking about the big 800-pound gorilla, is the fact that what we keep building in Emeryville are drive-in, drive-out podium apartments and condos. And those are just decidedly unfamily-friendly. They're essentially gated communities in the sky and, you know, as such, podium development, you know, it's auto-centric. It kind of turns us back onto the, onto the public realm. And so if we want to build families with little sociopath children, that's, that would be the way to do it. Now, if you don't want to have sociopathic children being raised, you don't make gated communities. Instead, you do a different urban model, like say for instance, New York, Brooklyn. There, they don't have drive-in, drive-out. They have, you know, brownstones and, you know, it's, people don't have to drive cars there, but we could have, put garages around Emeryville so families, people that want to use cars could park in a garage and then walk a couple of blocks till they get to their home. But that's, that's what you want to do. You want to have it not be drive-in, drive-out so we have this alienating kind of architecture. And this plan here doesn't address that at all. It just, it just assumes that it's, we should continue building drive-in, drive-out apartments and that we can deliver healthy families that way. And I posit, no. I think we should look to places that have done it, for instance, New York, and that's the model we should adopt. So let me put this here. Okay. I need a, is that my time? Can someone, can I ask if somebody will save their time to me?
Once everyone speaks, we might invite you back up.
Thank you.
Vicky Sewell, again. I agree with Brian. I don't know why we don't interview or take a poll of the people at Ambassador Laundry and ask them how they like their apartments and what works. I know they like their apartments, but there's flaws and they live there and they have families, Brian. Lots and lots of kids across the board and they all go to Anna Yates, they all go to school here. We could talk to them. They, I think they'd love to talk to us and the next building we build could be better.
Any other speakers?
I just have a quick question about how they are, how they decide that they are wheelchair-accessible. Because like my unit is a disabled unit, but like I said, there are definite flaws for a wheelchair getting around in my unit. And one of the real issues is carpeting, the wall in the odd spot, like my bedroom door goes, like when you come in, you have to go immediately into one of my bedroom doors. And the way the door opens, it doesn't function. And so I have to like go all the way into my house, turn around, and then come back in. In my dining room area, that's supposed to be a dining room, if I put my dining room there, I can't get my wheelchair through. And I can't really fit my wheelchair into my bedroom very well because the door space isn't big enough, the turning radius, and with the bed in a nightstand. So I'm just trying to figure out how they're deciding that their wheelchair are accessible, if they have people in wheelchairs helping them with the design and following a wheelchair person around to see the easiest way for them to go around. That's a huge issue being that I'm in a wheelchair. And I found that problem in a lot of the disabled units. Thanks.
Are there any other speakers?
If you can keep it brief, we'll give you another two minutes. Two minutes, thank you. That's fair. Does this work?
Seems like it.
Is it working?
Yes.
Okay. Notice here, here's our, here are three undesirable units. And what you'll note is that the bedrooms tend to open onto the, onto the live space. The bedrooms go directly onto the live space. Here's one where it doesn't, it has a hallway, so that's different. But generally, as you go through these plans, you'll find that the undesirable units have that one characteristic, whereas the desirable units, none of them, it's preferable to have the bedrooms open onto the live space for a family-friendly unit. So I want everybody to pay this close attention because, and the next item we're going to be talking about here tonight is going to be the public, I guess it's called the marketplace development. And you're going to see unit, typical unit plans that do not comport with this. So I just want to make, make everybody aware that, what's going on here. And then later on, as we look at that development, to bear that in mind. Thank you very much.
All right. Last call for any other speakers. All right, great. We'll close the public hearing and we will bring this back for discussion. Who wants to start? Brad, you want to start?
Oh, sure. Great job, you guys. Great to see all the work that's been put into this. Actually, my comments primarily were related to pre-existing items in the just general residential category and most of them are pretty small. But the portion J 29 about corridors serving six units or more, define entries and break-up walls by using lighting and articulation of walls and ceilings. It'd also be nice to see something in there related to creating gathering spaces in long corridors to break them up, possible seating and a bulb out where families, kids can gather as they're moving through the corridor, a place to sit, tie shoes, et cetera. There were some things in here that I don't know exactly how they apply. J 34, talking about vaulted ceilings, arches. Wasn't sure exactly what that had to do with anything, but, let's see here. The J 35, in this discussion of foiers, foyer, depending on where you're from, I'm still not certain that that's, you know, I know the language got watered down a little bit in the family-friendly portion, but still not certain that that's the most important aspect. You know, if a door opens directly into a great room and there's a closet nearby or something like that, it can work just as well. J 37's mention of a pantry. J-37's mention of a pantry, I don't... I mean, a lot of smaller units, a pantry just takes up extra space. If there's enough cabinetry, it can serve the same purpose as a pantry, and that space might be utilized better elsewhere. And then, I think it would be nice to see something, whether it's in the guidelines or the regulations, that gets to the heart of the overall building and the way that it functions. And there is stuff in here that does touch on the visual connection of units to courtyards, et cetera, but a lot of times what we see are that the units are entered from corridors that wrap around the courtyard, that don't have any visual connection to the courtyard itself. So you might have a double-loaded corridor with units on one side facing a courtyard, and the other side facing the exterior, you know, outside streets, and you could walk on that corridor for half the building before you get to a place that even has a visual connection at all to the corridor, and that's generally the place where you get to the corridor, or sorry, to the courtyard, and that's generally the place where you enter the courtyard. And so, I'd like to see more connections between primary paths of travel to the courtyards, and also thinking of that in, not just horizontally, but vertically. I know we've seen some projects where, if you're looking out onto a courtyard from your unit, and you want to get to that courtyard, you have to sort of go outside, go to the corridor, go down the corridor, go down an elevator, and go back down another corridor to get out, and really thinking in those terms of how to have the most direct connection, not just visually, but physically, to courtyards, for the ability to supervise your children, for children to get there in a safe manner. And then, you know, it is something that I'd like to see us discuss more, related to the comments about New York City, or some of the things that we saw, where we, I think one of the diagrams shows a double-sided townhouse, where one side faces the street, but the other side faces presumably a corridor that connects to the parking. I'd like to, I mean, the more that you get out of your car, go straight into an elevator, go right to a double-loaded corridor, and get into your unit, the more likely you are to be living an anonymous life in that building, where you don't know others, others don't know you, no one's looking out for you or your children. And so, really keeping in mind how you move, how you get into the building, how you move through the building, are we putting too much emphasis on efficiency of getting in with your car, getting your groceries into your unit, and not enough emphasis on creating a community that's going to nurture and reinforce a family-friendly lifestyle? Those are my comments.
I appreciate those comments about the overall structure of the building, and the way that people interact within the building, and the paths of travel, and the accessibility to the open spaces. I think that that needs to be, some kind of guidance needs to be added into the guidelines on those areas. Other than that, I think that, for the most part, that these cover a lot of really important points, and are going to be very useful, and going to be very helpful in letting developers know what we're looking for, and certainly this... The diagrams showing the undesirable units are what most of the two-unit apartments are in both of the projects that are coming before us, and I recognize that. I think that, in terms of the foyer and the pantry pieces, just talking about transition spaces, or a little bit more flexibility in those would be useful. But other than that, thank you very, very much for a job well done here.
Well, I think it's amazing, all that you've been able to incorporate in this. On J-36, I think that all kitchens should have exhaust fans automatically, not just cross-fertilated windows. You know, I think it is important to show furniture in the plans. Other than that, I think it's not bad.
That was quick. Well, I have quite a few thoughts on this. First of all, I do recognize that there was a lot of thought and work that went into this process, with a lot of people, and I want to thank and appreciate all the work that was done for this. I'm beginning to, to this date, no one has yet told me how we guarantee families are going to get these units. We're putting in a lot of regulations to make these things family-friendly, but we still don't have a way to get families into these units. And primarily, that gets to the affordability component of this. We can require developers make these most glorious places, that are just grand for anyone to live in, but my thought is that our Christmas list of Santa Claus is getting bigger than his sleigh can carry. I think basically what we should be doing, and the reason I really would rather have this discussion with council, because they're the ones driving this, they're the ones wanting this, and I would really like to have a more open dialogue with council before we go passing a resolution like this. But I just think what we should do is limit what we're demanding of developers, because everything we require a developer to do adds to the cost. You can't add all these wonderful amenities and expect the house to be affordable unless you've got a lot of subsidies for them. So I just don't know how realistic this is going to be. So I think if we could limit what we really want, that really make these houses agreeable and usable to families, we'd be more successful at getting those things. But for me, I'm still concerned that our city itself is not drawing families. Our schools are a problem, and the evidence I've gathered myself, people don't even look at our city, let alone our housing stock, before considering to move here, because they don't think our schools are going to, they don't think there's place for their children to play, they don't think that the city is secure enough, or has the financial stability to maintain security. Those are things we can directly control. We cannot control who gets a house, that's illegal. Anyone that wants a house can get any type of house. And my own research, I've gone to the three developments that have opened with three-bedroom units, less than half, and each of those units are with families. And one of them has no families in their three-bedroom units. So, the evidence I've been able to collect shows me that building these units, though it is important, and that's what we need to draw families, if these units aren't affordable, we're going to draw the people that are going to Cal, who can afford to split up the room with roommates and et cetera. So, I think if we increase the incentives for building the three-bedroom units, and we make them more affordable, and during our discussion with council, I'm going to share with everybody there, the Legislative Analyst Office has just produced an 80-page-plus report on why is housing in California so expensive? So this is an issue that's not Emeryville's issue, this is a statewide issue. And if we don't address that, making the developers build these lavish units are not going to make them family-friendly. They're going to be desirable to families, but no one's going to be able to get into them. Right now, I've checked with Emmy Apartments, and I've gone in and talked to the leasing agent at Park on Powell. Their three-bedroom units are $4,100 a month. A family would have to make over $140,000 a year to qualify for that. And if that family has that kind of income, they're going to go live in Orinda, or they're going to send their kids to private schools. So, the bottom line is, if we can't make these things affordable, and we keep asking the developers to do this, and make these things more expensive, we're shooting ourselves in the foot. So this is why I would rather not vote on this tonight, I would rather have a long dialogue with council on how we address the bigger issues. The elephant in the room is affordability. It's not what we're building. I have lots of families in Pacific Park Plaza. We have one entry and one exit to the building. I've watched children grow up from preschool up to adulthood, and I'm in a high-rise. So, people do live in two-bedroom units with families, and they make it work because they want to live here because of Emeryville, because it's proximity to jobs, to recreation, whatever it is. Those are the things we can control, and those are the things we need to pay attention to. Let's make more three-bedroom units. I think we're starting to see that, and more families are coming. The evidence on what we were presented on it show, every year, we're getting more families. So we're doing something right, and I think we need to continue that, but we need to make it realistic. And, you know, I think there are four or five things we could pull out of this thing that say, developers, you have to provide this, this is really what we need. But to make this whole laundry list, and if we could go back, I don't think we need to go back to the pictures, but they show the picture of the balconies that are undesirable, that are off of bedroom, but there's a door that accesses it off the living room. So if the living room can open up to the balcony, and you can put a barbecue out there, to me, that's a functional balcony, even though the major frontage of it is just off of a bedroom, but you can still use it off of a living room. So I think we start nitpicking and making things have to be one way or another. Our lot sizes are very small, our lot sizes are very oddly shaped. So, to say that this cookie-cutter model can fit into every configuration, I think is draconian, and I just don't know how we're going to achieve what we want to achieve by doing this. I just think we need to work harder on more of the affordability factor and the desirability of the city, and definitely encourage building of units that are more friendly to people with families.
I must say, I agree with you.
I would say that, in the first place, I don't consider these guidelines to be setting up luxury apartments. I don't think that that's what the guidelines are setting out. I think they're setting out some very reasonable criteria for family-friendly housing. I agree, we have to deal with the affordability issue, we're all grappling with that, but I think that when you are building multifamily buildings, you're building something that's going to be here for 30, 40, 50, 60 years, and if we get the greatest schools, and if we get everything that we want, and families are flocking to come here, they still are going to have to have these units to move into. So I really support these family-friendly design guidelines, and I think that they're worth going forward with, especially because they can be adopted while we're working out all of the magic formulas to have affordability to go with it. So, I'd like to see it move.
And I agree, I don't have a lot to add, other than to thank staff for all their hard work on this. And personally, this is an issue that I really grapple with and really struggle with. It's, you know, what is family-friendly housing, and what makes a unit family-friendly? I sort of, myself, subscribe to the Potter-Stewart definition of family-friendly housing, I know it when I see it. But, you know, to define it is a challenge in its own right, and I think that we've done a fairly good job here. And I think it's important to remember that these are guidelines, so, you know, as I was just thinking about it, I mean, you know, we want something that walks like a duck, and quacks like a duck, and this is, you know, we've sort of now created an instruction manual for how to create a duck. You know, it kind of walks like this, and it kind of sounds like this, and it's one of these several colors, and swims sometimes, and walks, you know, flies sometimes, and here you go. So, I think that the guidelines are pretty good. I mean, like I said, it's important to remember, they're not hard and fast rules. I think that's what we're going to discuss on May 2nd with the council, is what rules and regulations do we want to set up to work in tandem with these guidelines, to attract family-friendly housing, and affordable housing, and other things that satisfy the goals of the city, and work with these guidelines. But I think we do need to move ahead on these, so that we have something to hold up as an example for the projects that are going to come before us in the near future, such as the couple of projects that we'll be giving input on tonight. So, with that, I would entertain a motion, if there aren't any other comments.
If I could, I just have another more, maybe more clarifying question, I don't know which person in the staff could answer this, but as Chair Moss says, he says that we're putting through all these guidelines, but I also heard the term "regulations." So are there regulations in this resolution that we're passing, or are they all just guidelines?
The only regulation-related thing in the resolution is that the regulations would need to be amended to not require in-unit laundries for a bonus for family-affordable housing, for family-friendly housing.
Well, with the understanding that we can go ahead and change these, and add sections to them, or tweak them, as we are moving along in time here, I would move that we recommend approval of this to the city council, along with the approval of the not having laundry in unit necessary.
Is there any interest in adding something related to circulation and access, both visual and circulation-based access to courtyards and common spaces?
I'm sort of curious how you would phrase that.
Something about efficient, efficient circulate, or efficient access via circulation from individual units to courtyards, and visual connection. I think there already is something about visual connection from units to courtyards, but maybe visual connection from circulation to courtyards as well.
That's all right with me.
You could make it a recommendation, I suppose, but...
Yeah, does...
All just guidelines.
Does the staff feel like if we went forward with that, that they have enough information to craft an additional guideline?
Could say, provide efficient access via circulation from units to courtyards, and visual connections from circulation to courtyard. How's that?
From circulation to exterior.
Exterior, yes, not just the courtyard. Exterior spaces.
Does that sound good? Okay. And you're amenable to adding that?
Yes.
All right, then I will second that motion.
Have a roll call. Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Gunkel?
Aye.
Commissioner Keller?
I'm on the fence about either abstaining. I really think since these are just guidelines, and we have the opportunity to talk it over with council at our May 2nd meeting, that, in the spirit of cooperation, that I will vote yes on this.
Chair Moss?
Aye.
The motion passes, 5-0.
Thank you, and I also do think it's really worthwhile chatting with the folks that are living in the units, and, you know, doing some post-occupancy evaluations and following up on that.
We do have that planned.
Great.
All right, so with that, we will move on to our two study sessions tonight, the first of which is the Marketplace Redevelopment Project, and this is for the Shellmount site, otherwise known as Parcel A.
Okay, so, good evening again. So, this is Shellmount Site, or Parcel A. The railroad tracks are right there, and you have the Shellmount Street. It's positioned in the approved Marketplace PUD at Build Out, so it's fairly consistent with that, in terms of location size, I think we've gone through that before. So in terms of the changes that have occurred since the last study session, which occurred in January, the basic layout remains the same, and the basic circulation remains the same, so you've got Shellmount at the bottom, so there are two vehicular entries on the north and the south end, and the main lobby occurs along Shellmount. As you would recall, we have about 14,000 square feet of retail, ground-floor retail, and a little under 200 units on top of that, and the building is divided, it's the same thing, the southern portion is 50 feet, and the northern portion is 70 feet. So, like I was saying, the circulation remains the same, we have loading and trash collection occurring on the northern end, and the pickup actually will occur on, I'm sorry, the pickup and the loading will occur for both retail and residential on the southern end, and there will be room for trash on both ends, and the green line kind of shows how the trash would be moved from one end to the other. So this is the upper levels, and again, the blue line shows how the pedestrian connection would occur within the two buildings. So in terms of changes, there are basically two main changes that are occurring. One is on the pedestrian bridge, there were some comments made regarding the pathway, that it made straighter and clearer, and that the by trough be added to the grand staircase. And in terms of other changes, they have refined the landscaping elements, and in addition to that, they have also... As you can see, here's the staircase. And one of the comments was made that as you climb up the staircase, there wasn't a visual connection to the other end because of various landscaping elements that are shown. So that, so that was one of the main comments. And then this is also the January study session, showing landscaping at the different podium level courtyards on the two buildings. These have been further refined, and so the current proposal is this. So here's the staircase. They've introduced the bike trough that goes all the way up the staircase. The seating along on one side remains, and as you can see, the landscaping in between has been removed, and as you reach up, you have a fairly straight eyesight to the end of the bridge. Some of the other things remain the same. These are five townhouse units opening up to this walkway. And here is one unit which also has a patio aligning the walkway. There are more refinements in terms of, you know, the various species of different planting materials, and also the different courtyards here. These, I think, I believe I have, I'll come back to the courtyards in a minute. So here is the bridge walk, and the bottom kind of tells you the images of the kind of seats that will be introduced, the kind of, the bike troughs, the signage at the staircase level, some lightings, and the materials. What they have also added and changed since last time are wind screens. So these dark lines are the proposed wind screens, which would be about eight feet in height, about 30 to 50 percent, they would be porous. And the plantings also would be the kind that would mitigate the winds along this corridor. So that's something that they have added and studied furthermore, and, and I believe they're doing another wind study to kind of nail down the exact species which would work to mitigate the winds that might be going through this corridor. So these are the different images for the various courtyards. They have introduced, starting to refine different play areas for children, different seating areas, and that's, and these are the images for that. And I'm just going through it quickly because I know that applicant is going to go into further details. So the other change that has occurred since the last time is in the unit mix. They have increased, so these is the evolution of the project with the three study sessions that we've had. And so from the last time, they have increased the number of two bedrooms and three bedrooms, and you can see the numbers in front of your screens, and, and the overall unit count has also been reduced. In terms of the unit design, this is a work in progress. This, this was attached to your staff report, and it's kind of the comments Arnold has been working with the applicant in trying to get these designs where they are friendly to families. And some of them have been addressed, some of them are, like I said, is in the process, and they have also been changing their unit mix and increasing the number of two bedrooms and three bedrooms. So Arnold will continue to work with them to make sure that they are in compliance with the family-friendly guidelines that we've talked about this evening. So in terms of the overall design, this is the rendering at the January study session. So the changes that occur in terms of design refinements occur on these corners, on the southwestern corners and, and the balconies here, also the general lobby area as well. And so this is the current proposal. As you can see, these have been more refined, these images, and the elevator has been more refined, and the lobbies has been, and the next slide will give you a better idea of that. And also, as you can see, they have introduced the green roof on the southern building, which is the 50-story building. The other change, this is the Shellmount, Shellmount elevation, which was shown at the last study session. And if you may recall, on the retail front here on the northern building, they had these brick columns. They still stay, but they have changed the brick to a dark, a dark burnt brick, so that it's darker in color. And this is a kind of a more detail of that. And so you'll have brick, dark brick here, and so that's the main change in terms of the design on this side. This is the railroad side. This was something that they were working on, that elevation. And so the current proposal is this. What, you know, you still have the mix of materials, they don't change in terms of fiber cement paneling and plaster, as well as a bit of lap siding. And what they have introduced here is they've worked on defining these two features, and then these are lattice kind of paneling with a little signage here. The, if you recall, the public market sign that they had shown last time, that has been reduced by almost half. However, this sign may be moot. The city attorney informs us that this sign will not be allowed because this constitutes an off-site advertising of the public market.
What?
So in terms.
Can you elaborate on that?
I think since Mike is here, I'll let him.
It's part of the Public Market PUD, right?
Correct. But the public, this is a residential building, although there is a portion of retail at the bottom.
It's a separate piece of property owned by a separate property owner. It's an off-premise sign.
Hmm, okay.
If it's at Marketplace instead of Public Market, since it all seems to be known as Marketplace?
So why, why are you, what is Marketplace sign for? It's really to advertise the, the retail component.
Maybe the way I would look at it is advertising the neighborhood. I see, living in the area, I see that whole thing as, I call every part of that parcel the marketplace. And I see is interchangeable. I see, hopefully, what is done, there's retail on throughout the whole project. So I think if we didn't call it the public market, which is what that property is, and we call it the marketplace, it just tells people this is the neighborhood you're entering. That's the way I would look at it.
We can look at that.
Moving on. So I take it that the commission likes the sign?
I actually don't like the sign. I just defend their right to have it.
Okay, then we can come back to that, then. And then, of course, if, if you don't like it, then the whole legal discussion is moot, so.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not a big signage fan, actually.
Okay.
So generally, you know, the staff thinks that it's going in the right direction overall.
Some of the comments that we had before was, you know, the way finding signage would be important. We appreciated the introduction of the green roof to the, on the south building. We had some questions regarding the signs, the AVA signs. I think it's more clarification in terms of are they illustrative, and then if they are not, then what are the various details? But I'm sure that can, can be more defined in subsequent submittals. There was no agreement among us on the change in material from brick to the black glazed brick. So something for you to think about and give your opinion on. And this is another comment from last time, that the public art component of the building would need to coordinate with the public art proposal under the Powell Street Bridge that is currently being implemented by the city. So in terms of issues that the commission needs to give their opinion on is pretty much the same as last time. It's the proposed unit mix, and as well as on the design concept and the preference for materials and any other issues that you may have. So I know the applicant does have a detailed presentation, but before they begin, if you have any questions for me, I would be happy to answer, otherwise I will hand it over to, not sure who is going to be talking, but to the applicant.
I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
In the, I think it was the staff report, if not the email, it said something that we would get the DCC comments on the dais tonight. How come we haven't seen those?
Those were the staff comments.
That's the ones you've given us?
Yes, yes.
And is there a reason they didn't make it in the packet this time? That's not going to be a common occurrence, is it?
No, it's not going to be a common occurrence.
Okay. I figured there might have been something that hung up. Also, the, the plans were very specific in mentioning that there were 179 units and, or, and, I mean, the 167, and you guys said 107. What is the unit count?
Unit count is what I showed you, which is 167. That was an error, I forgot to mention that. But the plans that you have are consistent with the slide I showed you, which is 167, and the unit breakdown is what I showed you at that slide.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry about that. I would also like to mention that I emailed a, forwarded an email from Cindy Trulov of the terraces, and a hard copy is on your dais as well. I, not, she was.
She's here.
Oh, I didn't see you. She'll be here, and she will talk about her email as well, in terms of, it's, it sounds like that the terraces, a lot of their concerns have been addressed. They've got a couple of concerns regarding noise, which I believe the applicant is working with, with them.
So I, I want to make sure, I, I want to make sure I understand the discrepancy about the unit count. So where, where was, the, the table in our staff report was incorrect?
I'll tell, I'll, let me just get you.
It's, that's the difference.
Oh, okay.
So what happened, so the table, the, the last column for current proposal is incorrect in the staff report. This is the current breakdown.
Okay.
And that is consistent with the, with the plans that you have.
Okay, all right.
So what, the plans that you, that you have and that you saw are, and are reviewing are, the breakdown is this, which is slightly different from the one that the staff report mentions. This is, this happens when plans are being on a runways, but no apologies for that.
Yeah, no, no problem. All right. Thank you, Meru.
No, wait.
All right. So we'll invite the applicant up to give us a presentation.
Good, good evening. My name is Nathan Hong with Avalon Bay and Chair Moss and Commissioners. So we're glad to be, be back. I think it's been a few months since we've showed you this, but since we were here last, we, all on our team has worked very hard and listened to all of your comments, you know, made revisions to the drawings, which our architects will, will show you. And, you know, thanks, Meru, for clarifying. We, we did, you know, look at quite a few things, and I won't go into the details because architects will, but we did look at those elevations, as Meru showed you. We have met with our neighbors and wanted to make sure that we worked with them and collaborated on addressing their concerns. We have looked at the bridge walk and, and considered the bike trough and a lot of the other important points that were brought up, and most importantly, on the units. And as Meru kind of highlighted, we, we heard you loud and clear about doing more twos and threes, and so we've worked very hard, and this latest thing shows, you know, something where we think we can work up to 55 percent of twos and threes, and we've also increased our three, three bedrooms. So, you know, then finally, you know, I know the whole family-friendly discussion, we have also worked with Arnold and took a close, hard look at all of the guidelines that were there before, and, you know, we've done our best to, I think, incorporate a lot of that with, you know, diversity and variety of unit types, too. So just wanted to open with that so that you knew our, our thinking on it and really wanting to work with and cooperate with staff and the commission.
No introduction?
Raise your mic up.
Well. Good evening. My name is Tom Cox. It feels like old home week now, back again. I appreciate Nathan getting up and kind of illuminating everybody as to the energy and effort that's been put into coming back to you tonight with another iteration, and the things that we've been concerned about and considering, and the efforts that we've gone through to try and accommodate all of those thoughts that we've received from commission over the last several study sessions. So we're talking today about Parcel A, and as you well know, Parcel A is in the upper right-hand side, just got a mouse here, up in this upper corner. And the talk tonight, or the study session for us, is Parcel A and Parcel D, or the theater site. And first of all is A. And correctly, that is 167 units. As you can see by the site plan, we have, whoop, we have retail on the ground level, parking behind. We're immediately adjacent to the, the railroad tracks and immediately across the street from the marketplace itself. Last time we were here, we took away more than six comments, but primarily, I think that we were directed to strengthen the southwest corners and add more playful balconies, and we couldn't agree more. That was something I think we kind of lost on our iteration previous time we came back to you, so we looked very closely at that. Further, develop the east elevation, which is the elevation that is up against the railroad tracks. We also developed other elevations in flight as we were doing those iterations. Also, the development of the roof scape and the elevation seen from the southeast. Create a more direct bridge walk and add a bike trough, also to develop and provide exhibits showing elevations along the bridge walk. And lastly, and very importantly, was the provision of more family-friendly units. So I'd like to start off with the overall big idea of the project. Once again, we, we have, our, our office, our client, and I'm sure the city, is interested in 360-degree design, so we don't have a front and a back to our buildings. We like to think of them as all-important. We have taken this opportunity to break down some of the key and major components, like the gateway to the bridge walk, the intrigue portal to the, to the public marketplace area. And we diagrammed these, and we've talked about these before, and I think they came up in your package. The building itself, 167 units, 14,000-plus square feet of retail. All of our parking is contained on-site, behind the retail and one level above that. We have two entrances on either side, coming off of, in and out of the garage to ease circulation concerns. Also, the arrows gives you some sense of what the pedestrian circulation and the bike access circulation also accomplish. So first of all, we wanted to strengthen the corners. I think we took a very strong look. I think one of the things that we really liked about it, an iteration or two ago, is that we had some balconies that were very playful, and they were asymmetrical, and they kind of moved in and out of the building, and it gave a really interesting quality to those corners. It, it helped lighten up the corners, it made them interesting, and as you're coming up the street on Shellmount, on the lower right corner, you can see those balconies. We really worked a lot on the retail and the ground level and the pedestrian, the feeling of the pedestrian along the street. And then on the west side, the important part for us was to create a landmark piece of the building that was a gateway for two things. One, it was a gateway for our building, which we thought was important, and two, it was a gateway for one of the most important parts of the building, which is the bridge walk itself. So we've worked really hard on those. This is a little bit of a ren, not a little bit, it's a relatively good rendering, of the, that bridge walk, the leasing center down below, the right side is the, is the three-story building over the retail, and then on the left side is the higher building, and what those corners would look like and how the, the bridge walk will feel, and gives you a good perspective of the components of the bridge walk also. Again, this is just a snapshot of the materials, the layering, the coloring, and, and the offset of the balconies, to try and make that an exciting and dynamic corner. And then on the retail level, our other concern was the, the pedestrian experience. So there is some changes in material. I know we talked about the glazed brick, but we're also utilizing all those other materials, like metal and, and hardy panel and hardy siding, not hardy, but a cementitious panel and siding. We really wanted to work hard on the, on the retail level to make it an integral part of the experience at the street. So this gives you a shot from the corner, the southwest corner, showing those balconies up above, showing the enhanced storefront, the awnings, the steel awnings over the windows, and then that outdoor plaza opportunity at the corner. The east elevation is a real challenge. Obviously, there's reasons. We have a railroad across the way. We're very concerned about sound. We're concerned about the visibility of this side of the building from our neighbors. I think rightfully so, this side of the building needed some work. We've, we think we've done a pretty good job of. We've, we think we've done a pretty good job of delineating a more articulated, colorful, material-rich building on this side. We've actually wrapped those materials from the front and from the sides around to the east elevation and incorporated those in a, in a different way to create a strong element on the, on the bridge side here. On the south side of the building, we've continued to work with the architect, the Arnold, in terms of mass, form, rhythm, and we've also incorporated those materials on this side of the building as well. One of the concerns I know that the council had was they said they didn't want a building that had over 50% stucco. We agree heartily and that's not a building material. We agree and we have limited the plaster on this building, the exterior stucco to 30% of the building. And then you can see on the pie chart up there, percentages of the different materials that we're anticipating using on the building, stucco being only at 30%. We do have a materials board.
Yeah, they've seen it.
There, oh, and it's been passed around, so it gives you a sense of some of the ideas of the materials that we're anticipating using. Another concern, I think in the very first meetings, was the approval of the specific plan and the heights of the buildings and the mass of the buildings. The red outline that you see up here is the approved building outline by the specific plan. On the left-hand side, it's a 50-foot-high building and the red line you can see that wraps around our building. We worked very hard to keep everything within that height limit so that we're not obstructing the views of our neighbors. On the right, the building was allowed to go to, I believe, 140 feet. We're currently at 80, between 80 and 85 feet and we're well within the framework of the height limitation here also. There are some things that we took into consideration on this side of the building also. I think we might get to it later, but I want to mention it now. We did put a green roof on the building. It's a, it's a pretty expansive area and I think Landscape can talk about that. And we also put a roof deck on the four-corner of the smaller building. The bridge walk, there's two, two or three things that were key to the bridge walk. One was the addition of the bike trough. We actually had a bike trough on it, but we didn't show it and illustrate it. We went back with Landscape and the ownership and we, we really worked on getting the bike trough to, to work, so we have both an up and a down bike trough. Another consideration was the width of the bike trough and the, the path of travel. So we simplified it, but we tried to keep some excitement. We have some benches and some seating, we have planting, we have different pavement textures. Landscape's going to talk about that. But we tried to do, make it a direct approach. It's a, pretty much you can draw a straight line from the stair right to the, where the bridge ends at the, at the site and then also a direct approach to the elevator. So we worked hard on that and we think it's a good improvement and we look forward to showing you that in the landscape plan also. This is what that would look like if you were coming off of the bridge and working your way through our project and heading towards the marketplace. It also, you had asked, what does some of the interior elevations look like? Are we going to just stop at the exterior and then let the interiors go? We're anticipating wrapping all of those materials into the courtyards, using the colors, using the materials, and this gives you a sense of what the bridge walk and some of those interior courtyards would look like. This is a section through that and you can see the materials are being wrapped inside. The bridge is on the right and the stairs on the left. So with that, I know this doesn't look like April Phillips, but a very qualified individual.
Hi, good evening. My name is George Lowe and I work with April Philip's Design Works and I'm filling in for her this evening. She's at a board meeting in Washington DC. So I did actually want to speak first to the, the bridge walk a bit. I know that that was one of the primary areas that, from a landscape perspective, that you wanted us to focus on. And so we had some ideas that we were trying to integrate or to try to develop and we were trying to simplify the walk. As Maru pointed out in her opening, that there used to be some islands and planted islands in the middle of the walkway and those have been eliminated in order to open up the path of travel and to really emphasize the travel through the space and up and down the stairs and widen the walk overall. So that was a, one major driving factor in, in the changes. Trying to make sure that this was going to be an active space. Part of that is enabling different kinds of access through it, so whether that's the bike trough or ADA accessibility throughout, you know, those are important things. I know from the architect's standpoint, there was also the addition of the townhomes and the stoops that front the space. So what you're seeing on the left there, you know, there'll be more people kind of entering the space directly, entering the building directly from, from the bridge walk and so that's just creating more opportunities for activity there. And then integrating stairs and benches and opportunities for people to sit down and sit down in key locations and see what's happening, so, and then gathering opportunities, which also happens, of course, on the main stairs. So those were all part of the activation of the space. Down below there, you can see also that the, for instance, the stairs, the seat walls at the bottom left, in the patio that kind of fronts the elevator, the seat walls now turn that corner so people can sit there. It adds another place for just people to sit down, whether they're using the retail establishments or whether they're just waiting for people to, to show up or they're just walking people, watching people walk up and down Shell Mound. So that was part of an activation agenda, making the space dynamic. We have some of the images here, some of them been shown before with the signage and the lighting, so that at different times of day, there's different, different feels to the space, make it exciting in that way. Integrating lighting so that, you know, you have a seating situation that might look like the far-left during the day and at night it's, you know, has a different feel to it because the lighting is integrated into the space and that makes it feel like a, you know, you're getting more out of the space. And then also the materials and how we use materials to sort of help people flow through and give that dynamic sense. Another thing that Maru spoke to earlier was the wind. So from a, you know, we want to make the space comfortable and make it safe and make it inviting. So we are working with a wind consultant who is, we've had a couple of back and forths with them already, to look at how we mitigate the, the channeling of the wind through the space and that's done partially by the use of trees and vegetation and partially through the introduction of wind screens, which have a certain height and amount of porosity that is recommended and spacing, so we're going to be working through all of those details with the wind consultant to make sure that that's not a factor in terms of people's enjoyment of the space. And then, of course, the safe, the safety of it and the, the wind screens will play into that. They're going to be, ideally, they'd be integrated with the architecture and they'll be lit, so they'll be adding an element at night, but also adding the light with those kind of, maybe some kind of signature light fixture, like you're seeing at the bottom there, that just make it feel safe. So from the bridge walk, that was, that's again, that's been a major part of our redevelopment since last time. And then just briefly looking at the individual podium spaces, there's supposed to be different opportunities for barbecue and sitting around just informally. There's a game space, the terraces, sorry, are, there's three different levels, so sorry going back and forth a bit, but you're seeing what's called the sun terrace on the left, a family activity terrace where there's a barbecue and a child's play space, and then what's called the chill terrace where there is an opportunity for projected movies on the walls and lots of movable furniture and lots of opportunities for people to sort of create their own experiences in, in these spaces and adapt the space to what they want it to be. And that is pretty much it for the landscape changes at this point.
Thank you. I think I went a little too far on my slides back there. So, family-friendly. Last time we presented to you is the building on the left and at that point, we had 31% two-bedrooms and 4% three-bedrooms. And in those percentages, I would think that the family-friendly quality of those units had not been taken to the level that we have taken them to today. Not all units are family-friendly in this project. This is a project that has a diverse mix that, that accommodates more than families. It accommodates lots of people, but I think it has a very strong sensibility to the needs of a family-friendly environment. On the right is the new mix and the light tan shows the diversification of that mix and the new three-bedroom, two-bedroom total is about fif, is 55% versus the previous 35%. This has caused reduction in unit count, so as you pointed out earlier, I think when you looked at the reports, we've gone from 185 units to 167 units to accommodate the increase in the two- and three-bedroom units. We did a quick matrix. It is in your package. If you get a chance to look at it, that would be great. We took all of the key components and again, we worked with Architect Mamarella a number of times, I think four or five, if I'm not mistaken, and with staff, to come up with as, as a good mix of family-friendly components in the units that were designated family-friendly, family-friendly. And I can't read it from here and I, so, but one by one, all the green areas are accommodating family-friendly components within each of the units that we designated as a family-friendly unit. And those areas, the key components of those are dedicated dining areas, in-unit storage for strollers, bikes, trikes. We don't have any way to let, make the child put the bike in the closet, but somebody will figure that out. Side-by-side washers and dryers wherever possible, separate living areas from the living areas by the creation of some hallways and adjacent spaces, minimum of 60-square-foot decks or patios. I know there's been a lot of discussion tonight about the family-friendly components. We have, we have, I think there's a word strived, striven. We have attempted to incorporate as many of those components as we can, working with staff and with staff architect consultant. That's the project rendering I showed you earlier and I'm open for any questions if you would care to ask them.
Is the commercial space suitable for a restaurant or food service?
It most definitely is. The bay depth of the commercial space is suitable for a restaurant. It has a back hallway corridor to service things like food and trash to get it out of the restaurant space. We're certainly hoping and designating the two major corners, north and south. They have an outdoor widened patio area that they could use for an indoor-outdoor dining experience. I think the alcove here at the stair, immediately around that corner has, shares that same indoor-outdoor patio opportunity. I think this is ripe for, for restaurants, but also would accommodate other retail users as well.
So there's shafts?
Absolutely. There is, everything's been, we've dialed that in with the retail developer and our owner and all of those accommodations for air conditioning, shafting and all of that has been accommodated, yes, as well as delivery, which is always a big thing with retail.
I'm just curious, you've done the bike trough before or you've done?
I, I have done a bike trough before. This is a two-sided trough. The handrail goes right up the middle. It's a foot wide and bike trough coming, going up the hill and also adjacent to the rail coming down the hill, so the handrail's available also.
So how does, how do you prevent the handrail from interfering with the bike trough? The bike as you're rolling down?
Well, the trough, the bike going down.
Or, you know, if you're, if you're rolling the bike down in the trough.
You know, typically, being a rider, and I'm sure you're a rider, the bike would be tilted a little bit away from the handrail. So, I mean, I wouldn't lay it on, you could lay it on the rail, but typically you would walk down, if I'm standing here, the bike's got, going to be angled a bit. You've got to be able to grab the rail.
We actually looked at.
Come, come up.
We down, we looked at a lot of case studies for, for bike troughs. We looked at some of the things Bart had done in retrofitting their stations and we downloaded several sort of best practices or recommendations for the designs of bike troughs and looked at the details and they all showed or, you know, explained that you could have a rail directly over the trough or the, kind of like the, the divot in the trough because the way people use them, they tip.
Yeah, I just was wondering about, obviously the rail's going to have posts supporting it, is, are people's?
I think the rail, I think the trough itself, I mean, it's a, it's a foot wide, so the post is going to be in the middle, the trough should be easily five inches on either side.
There's a, I mean, you can see in the second from the left photo there, there's a trough, there's an image of a bike trough, it's going, you know, it's got two, two-way and you can see that there would be room to put a railing.
Put the rail down the middle.
Down the middle of that. And there are others where it showed on, on the side and they, you have a railing directly above it, so.
I'm sure you'll figure it out.
Yeah, I, I had a similar question, so I, I think when you guys come back for your approval, it'd be nice to have some photos of some examples and see.
I was thinking of a mock-up of an actual bike trough. It would just bring that thing in here with a rail on it and, no, I agree, 100%. What the last thing we want to do, and you do too, we don't want to build something or convince you of something and then I have it work. That's not going to help anybody and bicycles are important part of our, our lifestyle, so absolutely.
So just going back to the walkway and the landscaping aspects of the walkway and the wind screens, I'm assuming that you are really looking also at sightlines for safety and visibility. You mentioned having lights and some degree of porosity in the wind screens, but I'm hoping that they're not going to be creating places where there's opportunities for lurking.
Well, most of them, the, the recommended height for the wind screens is about, is eight feet from the base of the, you know, from the walkway itself. And the idea is that where they're shown there would actually be in garden beds, so, you know, they're not going to be, they'd, they'd be starting up a little bit higher and then they would be off to the side, so they won't be obstructing the view corridors, you know, anymore than the planting really, I mean, they're a bit higher, but they won't be sort of coming into the space more. But again, yeah, that's definitely something we'll keep in mind as we work to figure out exactly where they should be located.
Yeah, and the heights of the planting as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There are other fences sort of and screening going on, like between the private space and the public walk and the ideas and the designs of these things will, will tie into that as well, so they won't just be sticking out as, as a windscreen, you know, in the space.
Okay. Any more questions?
Yeah, yeah, any other questions? Nope, alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright, so with that, we will go ahead and open the public comment on this item. So if anyone would like to speak, please come forward.
Hi, I'm Cindy Trulov from The Terraces and I won't repeat the email I sent you. You have it in your packet, but thanks to the project proponents and Tom Cox Architects and to all of you and I think The Terraces, I certainly can speak for myself, but my neighbors as well, we felt really listened to and we want to stay engaged. And I'll just say, one little tiny concern I had when I saw tonight was some green, but still a fair amount of white around, on the roof, at least it looked like it on the smaller building and we're really concerned about heat reflection if there's too much white, so, you know, we'll take as much green as possible. And some of my neighbors are a little concerned. We did look at the noise report the engineer created for the proponents and it certainly is convincing to us that there will be minimal sort of detectable noise, but we do have a situation where We did look at the noise report the engineer created for the proponents, and it certainly is convincing to us that there will be minimal sort of detectable noise. But we do have a situation where we have, you know, trains zipping by, and that's one level of noise. That's kind of a moving object and probably was more the target of the engineering report. But we also have trains that are, they are stationary and they beep their horns, and then they beep again when they leave. And we're just, you know, I'm not sure what can be done about that, but if, to the degree we can think about mitigating that kind of stationary train noise, you know, train horn calming would be great, but that's a very expensive prospect, so.
I forgot to mention that, and we have taken into consideration the noise. We did do a sound report. I think it's a 1 dB increase, but there is the concern about the horns, and we are continuing to study that issue to see if we can, anything we can do on the building to help baffle that. Just wanted to--
Okay. So earlier tonight, we, you, the planning commissioner said yes to the family-friendly design guidelines. And you'll remember, there was floor plans, and you'll remember a salient point, and you can ask Maru about this, is that no, we want no bedrooms. Can you put them, can you put this on the, on the screen, please, the overhead projector?
Can you--
Large salient point. Okay, can you stop the clock, please? Thank you. Can you start the clock again? You'll remember, one of the main salient points of the document you just said yes to was that bedrooms don't open onto living rooms, dining rooms, and kitchens. And you'll see here, well, I've gone through this a couple days ago and today again, virtually every single unit, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, the bedrooms open right onto the living room, dining room. A lot of times you had to go through a dining room or a living room to get to the bathroom. You know, here's another one. I mean, it's just, it's just chock-a-block. Virtually every single, almost every single unit plan has that characteristic. So it's completely counter to the document you just said yes to for family-friendly housing. So the developer here tonight just told us that this is a family-friendly project, but of course, he would say that. So I posit to you that, you know, maybe he's wrong for whatever reason, but there's no reasonable person can say that this development comports with the document you just said yes to tonight. And so just warning to the planning commission, you don't wanna, you know, embarrass yourselves, I would think. So I would say, if you say yes to this and yes to the other document, tell more time, please, it'll make you look ridiculous. So let's, let's have some, let's have the document you just said yes to have some weight, please. In addition, I wanted to say, once again, it's drive-in, drive-out podium, not family-friendly. The, with nothing said by the developer regarding the retail. What we want is locally-serving retail, that's not formula retail. There's been nothing said about that. What we're gonna get is we're gonna get either empty units or we're gonna get formula fast food. What we need is, we need this in writing from the developer, what the type of retail we're gonna get. So you need to get that in writing. But if we just leave it up to the marketplace, we're going to get something that we don't want. How do we know that? By our, our history here in Emeryville. The city, remember, you have to remember, the city gets no net revenue from residential projects. We get nothing. As a matter of fact, they cost us a little. So every residential-heavy project, that's true. Yes, that's true. Every residential-heavy project, yeah, we don't, we can't make money off of residences, Mr. Cardozo. We don't make money off of them, and we shouldn't.
If you could wrap up your comments, please.
Yes. Well, okay. Every, we, we don't make money off of resident-friendly, resident-heavy projects, so it doesn't help us financially. So what we need in return is a really nice project, something that will enhance our city. And so I posit to you that this, that's not this project. Okay, now the gentleman here said you would like to cede two minutes to me.
No, I think, I think you've, you've had your time and we'll enter--
How much time have we had?
You've had three minutes.
I've had three minutes. I'd like to have another two. If this gentleman would like to cede, cede me two more minutes.
Let's see if, if there are other speakers and--
That's fair enough. Thank you.
Are there any other speakers? All right, we'll, we'll give you a brief moment. So try to make it brief.
Okay. The developer is saying that these are, this is a family-friendly project. He's telling you that he's worked on making it more family-friendly, and maybe he has, but that doesn't mean it's family-friendly. If this body here tonight forwards, forwards, says yes to this project and yes to the document you just said earlier, you're gonna look like fools. I mean, you can do that if you'd like, but remember, this is gonna go to the, to the city council. And remember, we all should remember what happened at the city council with regard to the, the moratorium that was, that was requested by three of the council members. That was voted down by a supermajority of three to two. Now, this project is going to be voted on by three council members, the same three that said yes to the moratorium. You can be at odds with the planning commission or with the city council if you'd like, but I think you should, you know, represent the interests of what the people of Emeryville want, and they've shown what, what they want by how they voted. I don't see how you, any reasonable person can say that this comports with the family-friendly design guidelines you just said yes to.
Thank you.
Please make it comport.
All right, last call for speakers on this item. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public comment, and we will open this up for discussion.
Okay. First of all, I wanna thank the developers and the architect for their further improvements on the project. I think you've done a good job. The comments, I give you kudos for doing that. Comments I have, and we didn't discuss yet tonight, is the crosswalk coming, coming off of the bridge. I know there's been a lot of discussion of wanting that to directly connect to the marketplace. I feel where they are shown on the current plan as being to the left and the right of the, of the bridge landing is appropriate because I think the bus shelter is in the proper place. And what we need to do is look at this project and its holistic finished project that the marketplace is not only gonna be the sole destination, that the east side of Shell Mount Street will now be activated with shops on that side as well. So people coming off the landing may very well wanna just turn right and left to go to the shops that are on that side of the street. So I think with the conflict of the bus shelter and the bus island, I like to just see the, the sidewalks stay where they are. The other items is, I like the new finishes and colors. I'm seeing more dark colors on homes and buildings all over the place, and I'm liking it. I'm just concerned with how the look will relate to and interface with the marketplace building. I'm thinking that perhaps the black window frames in both projects will kinda tie those two together. What I'd like to ask you to do is maybe instead of looking at the shiny brick, is maybe look at something like a clinker brick, something that's more bisque-fired or raku-fired, something that doesn't quite have that finish polish look, but yet still give you the black look. That's one way that might go towards working with the brick from the public market. Regarding the cement fiber board, I just asked that what you do use there is something with a more reflective finish, as shown on page A 2.10, more than a textured finish board that kinda looks like fiberglass or something like that. I'm very happy with the low 30% stucco use. I thank you for doing that. But from what I saw on the design boards, I like to see something of a smoother finish that has a more contemporary look rather than a real chunky, I know this isn't a trout look, but it's still a very, very textured, and I think something of a much flatter, smoother look in that texture would give you more of that contemporary look. I love the glass rails and the balconies. I'm very happy with the eastern railroad side of the building. I think you've done a lot there. I actually like those sides, the eastern side, better than the north and the south side of the building. I'm happy with the signs, but I understand where you're talking about a boat of contention there, so if they went away, I would be just as happy. I just, I thought it was an interesting architectural look. As I said before, it kinda reminds me of Pike's Place Market. I don't have as much problem with signage as others do. And I like the open fencing in the courtyards to the ridge path. I like the visual connection. I know there's a security thing there, but I think the openness of that is, is very helpful. Now I'd like to make some additions, which I hope are kinda limited. Would it be too expensive to add some kitchen windows to the townhouse units that front the walk? I know there's a perfect opportunity with the sinks face right onto that, and if there was a window there, that would really put a little bit more eyes on the street, so to speak, and just make those a little bit more friendly and bring in natural light, which of course we all like. So if they're, if you're able to put some windows in there, I think that would be a, a really good look. On A 1.2, since you're oversubscribed on the number of bike parking that the city is requiring, I'd like for you to add some bike lockers in the south wall of the bike room on the second floor. The first floor is a great place for bikes, lockers and bikes, if you can put them there. And looking at the plans, I really couldn't find a place to locate bike lockers on the first floor. Myself, my bike locker is on the second floor. I just drive up the riding ramp and go into my bike locker. Just having a locker is really important. So I think if you could put some there on the south wall of the bike room, I would be very appreciative of that. And where the new bridge, or the current bridge landing is in your garage, I know that's under debate for who owns that property, but if that's ever resolved, it looks like maybe some bike lockers could go in that area as well. So just something to keep in mind in the future when that issue is resolved. And I didn't really see where employees and customers of the retail could park, other than, is it gonna just be on the street, or is there any secured bike parking for the employees that will work in the retail spaces? Yeah.
Hi, Mark Stephan with Citizen Realty Partners. The bike parking and auto parking for the retail customers' employees will be in the parcel C structure. So we'll have bike lockers there, we'll have bike parking, we'll have auto parking.
Okay. All right. A few more things is also on the subject of windows is I like to see them on the floors of, are the stairwells on the eastern side where you have the exit stairs. It's kinda been studied, I work at the School of Public Health, and we've done some studies there that show that when there are windows and natural light in stairwells, they're more often used. And so I saw in a couple places that look like there might be some, but if at, not every landing, but every four-level, if there were some windows there, I think it would be much more enhanced space in those, in those stairwells. Also, if you can add a window to the dog spa on the eastern side, I know on the wall side, what the railroad side, there is a window in the, in the hallway. And so if you put a window in the dog, I know that the dog spa is an interior room, but if you put a window that faced that corridor or hallway, that also faced the window on the exterior on the east side, it would bring natural light in and some views if it wasn't tinted. And for your transit, I definitely want to see that we use the AC, AC Transit EZ Pass. And I'd also like you to consider a one-year membership to Zipcar for residents who are interested in that. I don't think it has to be mandatory, but if someone expresses an interest, it would be nice. I know my first year and Zipcar was a free thing, I think, through the city when they first started, so I, and I've been one ever since. And since your parking request is below the city requirements, I think this is a way that you can justify those lower numbers by giving, giving that off. And lastly, just for us, when we're looking at the project again next time, the illustrations that you used in the January packet, particularly on A 2.1, 2, and 3, were a bit more color-oriented and a little larger. You kinda separated the residence from the retail space and the quarters. It was kinda all color-coded. And I found that a lot easier to use, so if you could look at those compared to what was in this package and kinda go back to that first type, I find that as, looking at the plans, it helps me identify the spaces a little easier. I could do it, but it's really fast and really convenient to see them in a colored format. And other than that, I like the project. I like the increase of family-friendly units. I do recognize that the project is a mixed-use and it is not totally family-oriented, so I'm comfortable with the number of units and what you've done to make the units more family-friendly.
Well, I think I can keep it a little shorter than that. I think it's greatly improved. I like the layout. I think the floor plans are very good. I'm not a big fan of all the decks. I think the space could be better put within the unit, but that seems to be a standard nowadays. Also, I note the corridors have the ability to have outward views for the most part, which is something that Brad brought up, which I think makes a lot of sense. And so I hope they take, you take advantage of it in laying the thing out.
Well, I agree that it would be nice to bring more light into the corridors, especially on the east side of the building. That would be a good thing. I tend to like the warmer, the other brick colors that are more compatible with the other surrounding buildings, and I like those warmer colors rather than the, the black ones. There seems to be really, really limited access to both of the courtyards, and it would be great to see if there were other ways that one could get in, especially to the, the one that's supposed to be the family courtyard. It looks like there's only one way to get into that one, on the upper level. On the lower courtyard, it looks like there's a couple of ways to get in. But still, the physical access to that space that's serving so many units seems to be really small. I would also like to see the roof treatment expanded. It is still a really big white space up there, and the more green roof or some other treatment that would improve, that would be appreciated. I'm not a big signage person, so anything to do to reduce or remove the signs is fine with me. The configuration of the units really, really did strike me when I was looking at it, the two-bedroom, not so much the three-bedroom units, but the two-bedroom units, because they seem to be very, very clearly set up for sharing an apartment by adult people. Most of them, most of the two-bedroom units are even drawn with double beds in both of the bedrooms, and, you know, they're completely separated spaces. They do not, they don't feel family-oriented at all. And I understand it's a mix of uses, and there's a mix of people that are gonna be there, but I do think that at least a good number of those two-bedroom units need to be more oriented with the bedroom, the sleeping areas on hallways, off, together off the living areas, and the three-bedroom units as well. It would be good to have a higher number of three-bedroom units. I appreciate that you have come up in the unit count, but still, looking at, the vast majority of the units in the building are the two-unit buildings, and they're set up as two-unit shared adult spaces rather than family spaces. So I'd like to see that addressed. I talked about the windscreen and the planting, the visibility along the passageway that goes over the bridge to the, to the Amtrak station. And I assume that there's, looking at the lighting on, the street lighting on the plan, I assume there's gonna be a lighting study that shows where those streetlights are gonna end up. That's what I have for now. And I do appreciate that you have been talking with the terraces' residents and that you're gonna be continuing to get input from them and keep the lines of communications open.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you guys. It's come a long way. I'd like to reiterate a lot of the comments of my fellow commissioners, including the, some of the aesthetic ones regarding the brick, the stucco plaster being more of a smooth trout finish instead of the medium sand finish or whatever you've got there. I like the sign as a piece of art, as a work of art, if it's done properly. I think it could really, I'm actually most drawn to the eastern elevation at this point, and I think part of the reason is that it's just by necessity a little bit more industrial. And therefore, in some ways, and to me, it reflects the nature of the public market a little bit more than some of the glossier elevations and the elevations that are a little bit more broken up. The parking circulation, I, I encourage you to take a look at that a little bit more. There's just a couple, where the ramp drops in or comes out on the second floor in particular, the angle that it's at and the fact that there's no clear direction for traffic, seems like a car coming up could easily get clipped by a car turning around the side that doesn't even see it. So you might wanna take a look at that, or, or, you know, is that a wall right there or not? Parking on the fir, the first-floor ramp also seems to offer some issues, but the second-floor one's the one that really strikes me as a potential accident waiting to happen. Reiterate my fellow commissioners' comments regarding visual connection between corridors and courtyards, more direct access. and courtyards, more direct access, or more regular direct access from the corridors to the courtyards. The corner piece that we're, you know, talking about being this sort of, this, the corner piece of the taller, taller half of the building, it's getting there, but I think it still could use a little bit more, a little bit more attention to really make it this, this sort of focal point that you're trying to achieve there. I don't know that the shed roof is doing it a lot of service. It's just, it's something that's been done a lot, especially in Emeryville. Wondering if there might be something, another approach, a little bit more unique to this project. And, yeah, and as far as the crosswalk's concerned, I don't know, at this point, I lose track of which particular component the crosswalk is part of, but I, this is one area where I disagree with Commissioner Keller. I feel like the crosswalk should be at the bottom of the stairs. This is the primary, this is the primary path of travel for people coming from over the, over the railroad tracks and for them to come down and have as many options as possible at the base of the stairs, I think is preferable. And yeah, just to reiterate the comment as well regarding the units, the B, it seems like all the B1 units in particular are really set up as kind of dormitory style, or, you know, two, two bedrooms with each their own bath on either side of a small common living space. And so I'd, I'd like to see, and just the one diagram that you brought up, I think I counted half of the units were those types of units. And if, between those units and, and all the, you know, the studios and one-bedroom units, I think we end up with a situation where, you know, 80, 85% of the building, of the units in the building are, are really set up for singles or two, two unrelated adults. And that is, you know, that seems to be going contrary to the intentions, if your intentions are to make this a family-friendly development.
Yeah, and I share a lot of those comments. Yeah, I agree. I mean, in, I also want to thank you for your, your hard work on this. I think it is, it is really coming along. But I do have a lot of the same comments regarding the, the unit mix. I think it's really encouraging that over, I think over 50% of the units are two and three bedrooms. But I do share the same concern about kind of the layout of most of those two-bedroom units. I have noticed the same thing, that they, they seemed very much designed for, for unrelated adults. And then I, then I sort of started thinking, I mean, my initial reaction was, well, you know, they're, especially some of them, the have, don't even have a situation where you would be able to access a bathroom without walking through a bedroom. But some of the, you know, some of the others have bathrooms which are accessible from both the bedroom and the main part of the unit. And I was, it actually struck me as I was thinking about it, that that is exactly my own unit. But I think the difference is, is that I have a bathroom in my unit, which is clearly a guest bathroom, which also happens to be accessible from a bedroom. So the bathroom very much functions independently, and it opens into the living room, and it then has a pocket door which accesses the bedroom, and there's a separate sink on the other side of that pocket door. But the bathroom itself is very, it's very clear that it's the bathroom for the unit. Whereas these function like they are a master bathroom that happens to be accessible from the, the unit. So I would like you to work a little bit on that and just, you know, with a mind towards kind of observing the majority of the guidelines that we did discuss tonight in the, the family-friendly design guidelines. So I appreciate the matrix that you put together where you kind of highlighted which of those were being met and not. But I still think there's some work to be done as far as the, the unit design and floor plan. I also, yeah, as far as the, the design of the building, I also kind of had this, the same concern about the, the corner feature on the taller building. I think it's, it's getting there. It's, it's definitely improved, but there's still, there's still something missing, I think. The, as far as the, the other building, the shorter building, the, well, just in general, I actually also, my, I think my favorite elevation at this point is the, the elevation that faces the railroad. And that shorter building, I actually, I preferred the, the railroad elevation. I think the elevation that faces, Shellmount is a little, it's a little too regular. I think it doesn't quite have enough interest. I think it needs, it needs something else in terms of a material change or a color change or something that, that adds a little more interest to it. In general, the materials, I had some concerns about the materials. I didn't really, I wasn't in love with any of them, except really the, what was it? The, well, obviously, the aluminum storefront is, you know, a dark aluminum storefront, and that looks good. And there was another one, but I can't remember what it was. But the, I had the same concern about the stucco. It'd be great to see a smooth finish on that, or plaster, whatever you call it. The, just in general, I, I mean, I, I always seem to bring up the quality of the materials. And I, like I said, I wasn't, I didn't fall in love with any of them. So I think something that, that could make those materials either appear more high-quality or be more high-quality or something. I'm having difficulty kind of articulating that, but they just, they weren't very interesting to me. Board-formed concrete is a material that I really, I, I never know how to feel about board-formed concrete. On, on one hand, it's, I don't know, it just, to me, it, I don't know if I'm the only one that feels this way, but to me, it seems like a very dated material. Like, it always makes me think of the 1970s when we built a lot of things out of board-formed concrete. So I don't know if other people share that feeling or not. The sign, I'm not willing to, I have not, I'm not willing to say that, that no sign would be appropriate there. But I, I think if we are going to approve a sign that does extend beyond the roof line of a building, which would be highly unusual for most cities, and as well as Emeryville, I believe, that it does need to be something that's, that's really unusual and has a lot of, you know, artistic merit, or has a lot of, that there's sort of a design justification for approving that. The, the sign as it is now, as it is now, there, you know, there's no reason why it couldn't be a wall sign. It's just, it's not, it's not a very interesting or aesthetically interesting sign. It just, you know, just block letters could just as well be placed on, on the wall. So I think if we're going to, you know, to do it as a, as a sign above the roof line, that, that it needs to, there needs to be a prominent reason for it. And also, you know, it needs to, it needs to pay attention to the, kind of the overall architecture and the design of the building. Like, right now, it, it looks kind of funny because it extends, you know, above, it extends beyond that kind of vertical feature that it's attached to for no reason, and just kind of makes it, makes that feature, it just makes the building look top-heavy, I think, that, that area of the building. Let me see my notes. Materials, sign, floor plans, unit mix. Yeah, I think, I think I've touched on everything that I noted. So I will just, before we conclude or move on, I will just ask the applicant if they feel that they have enough input and information to, to move forward with our comments.
I think we do. We appreciate all your comments, and it's an ongoing learning process for all of us. Maybe a read on the sign, whether we'll get away with it or not, would be helpful, before you leave. You want to say something?
Yeah, yeah. And then I think, just, just as you mentioned, the material board that we had passed around, if you had any specific comments, or does that look okay? And, you know, anything else that we would look at a little bit further? I mean, we do plan to spend more time delving into the details of it, but if there are any specific comments, you know, that likes or dislikes, and I did hear general comments already. But again, just, just asking.
I think I heard, I think I heard at least two comments, if I could. One was on the panels, more of a sheen that gives it a higher-quality feel. And I don't disagree with that. I think it gives it a nice, not a glaze, but at least a bit of a sheen to it versus a pebble texture. And then the stucco being a little on the chunky side, and maybe a smoother or lighter finish on the stucco would be helpful. I don't remember any other specific comments.
I think there were a couple of comments about the brick in preference, that it's not the black glazed brick.
So black's good, but glaze, not, not so good on the glaze.
Oh, I liked the glaze, but.
All right, we're gonna take a vote on the brick. So look at the brick.
Look at the brick.
It would be, it would be really helpful to find out what the consensus is, so we know which way to go on that, on the retail finish, because we've got finishes, and we're trying to finalize that. And so we've got some that are interested in one, some of the other. And so if there's some consensus, that would really be helpful.
Well, I mean, right now, you're in, I think it was, it's the, the grocery store building you were showing as maybe, it was like a black, maybe it was a black brick at the base.
Yeah, that's right.
And then the existing public market is a red.
More of a red brick, yeah.
Kind of a rough, yin.
Right.
Is, can I ask a question of these guys? As, I'm curious if there's a material, like, because I, personally, I don't, I don't know how you feel. I, I agree with you, the, the color, I like the warmer kind of brick color, but I like the kind of glossiness of the brick and the kind of interest that that adds. So I'm curious if there's a, a way to do a glazed on it that still allows a lot of the, you know, still kind of adds some glazed finish, but allows a lot of the brick color to show through, you know, maybe kind of a, a more marbled look with the glaze or something like that.
Yeah, we want to be careful. If you're thinking more of a reddish glaze to it, it looks.
Well, just something that has a much more translucent glaze, I guess.
You mean more of a, like an ochre's color, or?
Or red brick with a glaze, where you're seeing the, what he's, I don't know if that's what you're talking about. Where you're getting the red, the natural warmth of the brick through.
Yeah, I mean, it's. I think we'd rather do regular red brick than red glazed brick.
Yeah, I would, I would rather see the brick being a brick rather than it being a coated brick.
It could look like some of the buildings you've seen in New York that were done, maybe the 80s, that shiny brick, and it just doesn't, doesn't carry well.
It doesn't age well.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, yeah, all right. Nevermind. That's not what I was saying. I mean, I just, I really like that glaze. I think if the, if that black glaze was just a little, was more translucent and allowed the red to show through better, I don't know.
I think if it's going to be red, it should be regular brick. If it's going to be glazed, it needs to be a darker color.
All right. So it sounds like we have more or less consensus on brick color, like.
No, Stephen.
Not necessarily. I, I am more interested, see, when I first looked at this, I thought, you know, this building isn't really relating to the public market. And then I thought, this is a separate project. Not every building within this project has to look like the public market. And I like the more contemporary feel of this as a separate building that's not the public market. But what I would rather see is something of a brick that has a texture and a warmth and a feeling to its look rather than a sheen. It could be black, it could be, because I really am seeing there's a lot of buildings, they just did the one next door to Pacific Park Plaza in more muted, darker colors. And I think I told you in a conversation before, that I think if you painted the public market tower a darker color, it would become more marketable, because right now, it's really ugly colors. So I don't mind the darker colors, but I just think the brick being shiny just sets it way off as being something else. And I think if we add a red brick to that, that doesn't look like the whole, the public market currently does, we're going to look like we tried to match it and we missed. And I think it's just going to make a kind of a chaotic mess, like, oh, what did they do there? They didn't quite hit that. And I'd rather see you do something different. But that ties together, and that's why I think the black windows kind of ties with the, the future, the black window roll-up doors you're going to do at the public market. So I think we can tie these together, but still make them separate projects. So that's my feeling. So I don't think you have a consensus in.
No, because I think you can tie it together using the brick judiciously and not, you know, it, it won't look like you're trying to imitate the public market, but it relates.
Yeah, but I think if you use brick brick, then you kind of get away from being able to make the building more contemporary, and it has to go more transitional and look more older or industrial. And I think if they're trying to do a contemporary building and you put red brick on it, it's going to be kind of odd-looking. But again, it's just, yeah, it's a bunch of opinions.
If you do it right, everyone will be all right.
Good luck with that.
Well, okay.
And I, I like board-formed concrete.
You do, okay. I, I just don't know how I'm supposed to feel about it.
When I was a child in the 70s.
The idea in the board form is supposed to be more of, again, more of the industrial look. That was the idea. And there's evidence of, it's not going to look like it was done today. We're trying to make it look like with some of the older industrial buildings that were done in concrete with board form back, you know, 80 years ago. That was the hope, that's what we're trying to achieve.
All right. I just got back from Freeway Park in Seattle, so I might be a little scarred. The, what was I going to say? At, at a minimum, as far as the, the materials on the Shellmount facade, I would like to see sort of a, at least a different pattern in the, the panels, is it the, the cement panels with that kind of brownish color. I don't know how you guys feel about that, but at least something that was a little more interesting than just all these vertical lines across the whole building.
You're talking the eastern side, or?
On the Shellmount elevation, on those panels, the, the brown elevations, or the, it's the brown material, it's, it's just, you know, they're just long overlapping planks.
Well, I've, I've actually seen it where it was done relatively well. I was in Oakland, somewhere near Lake Merritt recently, driving past, and it was a reddish, and they actually did, it was almost, almost looked kind of like a CMU in that it was a stacked bond, like, you know, the joints were all lined up, not staggered, and they, they were more horizontally oriented than, than vertically oriented. I thought it looked pretty nice.
I'm happy with the way that looks myself. I like the more elongated look on that and the more unified look. Because, because I think in some places, it's nice to have a rhythm that's uniform, and then they're staggering the yellow and blue boards a little bit. So I think if we staggered a lot of things, the thing would begin to look a little jarring.
So you got good direction.
Good luck with all that.
We'll, we'll, we can count, see who's leaning which way and try to come with a majority view on this and come up with something subtractive that everyone loves.
You have two people missing, too.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
Completely disagree.
You can use yours. All right. So with that, we will move on to the next study session, also on.
Could we take a break?
Someone take a break? All right, we'll take a break. We'll come back at 9:30. All right, we'll take a break, we'll come back at 9:30. All right, so we're going to go ahead and reconvene the meeting, and our last item tonight is another study session on the marketplace redevelopment, but this time, it is the theater site, otherwise known as Parcel D.
Okay, so we are on Parcel D, and this is, again, you've, a study session which you saw in January, and this is our third study session on this site. So, on this project, the main changes are more in terms of design refinements and landscape refinements. The basic program has not changed, so you have Shellmount here on the top, Market Drive at the bottom, 63rd Street on your right, and 64th on the left. The main lobby remains where it used to be, at the corner of Shellmount and 63rd. You have townhomes along 63rd, as well as Market Drive. And along Shellmount, you have a fitness center, and there's also a play area for kids that they have introduced. The vehicular entry occurs on 64th Street, it's shown in red, and it's your two garage with a podium building with two levels of parking and five levels of residential on the top. You have bike storage at the second level, which is right here, and there are bike rooms and lockers, and there's elevator which goes down to it. So this is your basic framework, which hasn't changed, two levels on top of five. So what the change that they have done, again, like in the previous building, is to increase the number of two-bedrooms and three-bedroom units, and they've increased it where both the two and three are about 55% of the total unit count, which is about the same as in Shellmount building as well. The two plus three are constituted about 55% of the total count. Again, like in the last project, Arnold has been working with them, it's been a work in progress, and he will continue working with them in order to make sure that the two and the three bedrooms comply as much as possible to the family design guidelines, which you approved earlier this evening. So this was the January study session, you, you know, and this is the Shellmount elevation. We've got a mix of, a mix of materials, a pretty similar mix in terms of plaster, cement panels, and a bit of lap sidings. The main feature of the building is this vertical element at the corner, which is the lobby, corner of Shellmount and 63rd, and this is what you see in your current plans, a little bit more defined, they've kind of broken down all the various elements. And in the packet, they've also shown a little bit more details of each block in terms of how the windows are insessed and things like that, and I'm sure they will show that as well. This is what you saw in January, and this is the 63rd Street elevation, so you have the main lobby here, this is the vertical element, there's a punch-out that has not changed as well in the current proposals. So it is, again, a little bit more refinements in terms of how the window treatments are done, but the basic concept is pretty much remained unchanged. There is, they did introduce a new sign for Avalon, I just wanted you to note that. Don't have too many details on the sign in terms of why it's going to be lit, but I'm sure that will come at a future date. This is the Market Drive, townhouse is at the bottom, and this was the mechanical areas. And this is the 64th Street, which is the vehicular entry here, and basically garage elevation, and you have equipment and equipment area at this corner. So what they have just started to do in this current proposal is work on the courtyard renderings, and also work on some of the courtyard programming of the space. So what they have is, in addition to the swimming pool, they've introduced a climbing element for children, and what they're calling a community chalkboard, not exactly sure what, how, what is that supposed to serve, but I'm sure they will tell us more about that. You have a club room, and then, of course, seating and barbecuing facilities at the courtyard. So, the applicant is here, will be going more into the details of their design refinements, and the questions remain the same, in terms of design, preference for materials, and the unit mix. So that concludes my presentation. If there are questions, I'll be happy to answer, otherwise, they do have a presentation.
Questions for staff?
Just like to mention that this proposal has 12 townhomes, all of them are two- and three-bedroom, eight of them are two-bedroom, and four of them are three-bedroom. The earlier proposal had about five townhomes, and they were all two-bedrooms.
I did have some questions. Maru, the staff report on page three says that there's two levels of bike parking. I couldn't find any bike parking on, I think it was the first level?
You know, yes, they had it in the earlier version, in this version, it's all upstairs.
On the second level, okay. And I don't know if you could tell me this, or if we need to wait to talk with the architect, but, again, I'm not clear on the double-decker parking. I know there's different kinds of things, so I don't know what they're proposing. There's the wall mount that kind of stagger, there's also the ones like at the bike stations that pull down. So just was wondering if they, or someone could tell me what kind of double-decker bike racks are planning?
I think we'll wait for the applicant to clarify, because we don't, I don't have that information.
And then, listening to the previous tenants of the Ambassador Project talk about visitor parking, I noticed there's only four spots in here for visitors for this whole building, and we're looking at like 200 units. So does the city feel that's adequate, or are they using public market parking to cover their...
So, the parking is being looked at overall, and so the next time that this comes, the parking calculations will be presented to you. So if you can just wait on that, in terms of both visitor as well.
I just think that we need more visitor parking in both those buildings, this one particularly, because it's over 200 units. And then, just, again, I could probably wait and talk to the applicant about my other question.
All right, great, thanks, Maru. All right, so we'll invite the applicant up.
Good evening, Tom Cox with TCA Architects. Let me just pull this back up. Which button did you hit? I'm going to watch this time. Oh, thank you. Good evening. So, I'm going to actually skip, in the interest of a little speed here. God, I just went crazy. There. To the last study session that we had, and the takeaway comments that we had, and there are probably more takeaway comments, welcome to discuss those. But two of the big ones were, like the design overall, generally speaking, like the design, but to continue to develop it in terms of texture, material, connections, layering. And the second one was, provide more family-friendly units. Again, there's probably more comments, and as we go through it, certainly, we'll bring those up. Again, the intention of the building, it's a four-sided building, Shellmount is facing east, we have a south side that faces 63rd, and then we have adjacent park, and adjacent residential building, two adjacent residential buildings also. This is the primary layout of the building. This shows the circulation, connectivity to the street, connectivity to the marketplace, connectivity to the park, connectivity to the bike lane, crosswalks, and also in-and-out access to the building parking also. One of the things we were trying to invoke, evoke again, was to pick up on some of those key elements of Emeryville. We think there's a very strong imagery that we're pulling from the public market, of course. There's a number of industrial, old industrial buildings with brick and color, as well as some contemporary buildings for office structures. And we're trying to find something that really speaks to a lot of those influences. Part of what we're doing here is we're treating each of the sides, or one side in two corners and a back, not a back, an east-north elevation differently, but using the same materials, much like we did on Parcel A, where we try and weave those materials around the building, but treat each of those sides of the building somewhat differently. This is the new corner rendering. We have adjusted a lot of the window sizes, more light and air, more openness, but I'd like to just continue around and kind of talk about how some of those changes have manifested themselves. So this is a call-out, and it's a little hard to see up here, I've got one here, of the materials that we're anticipating, and we'll get to that material board in a second, but these are key elevations with blown-up sections of each of the corners. Primarily on 63rd Street, as Maru mentioned, we have the large corner of the building at Shellmount and 63rd that is kind of that, almost departing the marketplace building, and we've located our leasing and a lot of our recreation amenities there. And as we turn the corner, we have the townhouses on the upper-right slide right there, and we're using those same materials with planters, porches, high glass, entry doors, as we come around the corner. So you get a sense of the whole building on that, did we ever name that road?
Market Drive.
What's it called?
Market Drive.
Market Road, I like that.
It's right down in the corner of your slide.
Well, yeah, yes, it is. No laughing. So that's the townhouse side. This is a description of the materials, and again, we're looking at similar materials to what we used on Building A. We're looking at cementitious panels with a nice sheen to it, we're looking at some board form, we're also looking at exterior plaster, but I think we've used it in both buildings, actually, rather judiciously. And in this case, we're actually at about 28% plaster, slightly less than Building A. The interior courtyards were a discussion item last time, is how, what did they look like, and how did they function? And one of the things that we didn't do is, we really didn't focus on the family-friendly area of the interior courtyard. We probably didn't focus on it because we hadn't evolved it quite enough yet. So what we did is, we spent a lot of time with owner, and with landscape architect, and we've now zoomed in on that area and identified a much more friendly, playful environment. Are you, we didn't talk, are you going to get up and talk about the landscape? Yeah, that'd be great, I think it'd be a good time. Last time, I skipped over this, and, so we'll start with that.
Thank you. Hello again, I'm George. One thing, just as part of the landscape package, and partially in response to some of the things that came out about Parcel A, like regarding the crosswalk location and streetlights, the design of Shellmount is being, is being driven, or is being, is under the scope of Hart Howerton as part of the overall Shellmount design, and the crosswalk location is coming from their discussion and their investigation of some other... of other conditions around the street. So we are showing it on our plans and eventually stuff on the sidewalk will be sort of within the scope for construction. But as far as design considerations, we haven't, we're talking to them, but ultimately we're not making those decisions. So just want to address that point.
Those will all be in the approvals that come before you for the parcel C and the Shell Mound realignment. They're all contained there.
Yeah. And then, yeah, here, this courtyard, I mean, it's a quite different condition from parcel A where it's obviously one building and one larger space. So it offers different opportunities than the other courtyard or courtyards of the building. And this one is, it's really been very much about family activities from the beginning. And to that effect, you see a pool, which as a parent, I know is probably child activity number one. And as well as like a larger play space with the barbecues and dining located adjacent to the children's play space. So that's what you're seeing there in the upper left-hand corner and it's shaded as well, you know, for sun protection. And the idea about, the idea driving the selection of play activities or amenities is really about, again, about interaction for the kids and giving kids a chance, rather than very prescriptive play space, something that is more amorphous, that either kids can program or families can program themselves by bringing stuff down to play there or, you know, could be programmed more generally by the building management. So you have some kind of play structure that's kind of sculptural as well, so it's appealing to different people. Obviously, that's not the final design, but the idea is that there's something that's more, again, amorphous so that people can interact with it in different ways and it's not so static. And then the chalkboard wall and dining areas. And there's several, a few barbecue areas located around the courtyard. So there's ones there next to the play space. There's also kind of a lounge area with a fire deck where you see there's an indoor-outdoor fireplace. So there's an amenity room inside and that fireplace is, you know, it's interfaced with from both inside and outside. So as well as lounge seating and then some other elements. But those are the real interactive, family-oriented elements of the courtyard design. And there have been some changes from the previous presentations and iterations, and that is largely being driven by stormwater treatment requirements and the need to get stormwater treatment planters into the courtyards. So that's been a, that's been a strong driving factor or one of the driving factors in sort of, in how this is laid out.
So with most of those stormwater planters, it's one of my pet peeves that they take up all the space in the open spaces and the community space. So you're doing stepped like seat walls and things like that to try to make the spaces a little bit more usable and not just be walking along four-foot-high concrete.
Yes. Yeah, that's something that's being taken into consideration, both from, within the courtyard and from within the units too. So the taller planters will be stepped back from the unit walls or the windows as well as from the space, the usable space within the courtyard.
And could you just talk a little bit about the wind, the sun, and the pool being on the shady side of the courtyard? Got a shadow study that shows that that's where it's going to be in the shade most of the time.
There is a shadow study.
You should just look at it too.
Okay. Is there?
It's really not. You have the shadow study in that package.
Mm-hmm.
Well, you have it in your package.
Yeah, we have it in our package.
I think it's primarily the sun or six, the main six months from May to September. I'm not sure.
You know, I had the same thought, but I didn't want to take the sun away from the children's play area either.
Yeah.
Do you?
We have one.
Okay.
That's Amy. That's the wrong. This package.
So this is, this is June. Here in the courtyard is mostly the sun.
You should pick up the hand mic because the people on TV can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Just working.
Tuck into it in the front.
Okay. How's that?
There you go.
Oh, got it, thanks. So the first one here is June and as I think you can see, for most of the day, from nine o'clock in the morning until three in the afternoon, the entire courtyard gets pretty good sunshine. This one is September, so this would be fall. It's also the spring. They're exactly the same for whatever that's worth. And you can see that the pool area is actually here and is in sunshine and it's in sunshine most of the day. In December, not going swimming.
So does that help?
Sort of. It still looks like it's, at the times when it would be most used, it looks like it's on the shady side. But I do understand there's a trade-off with the children's play area and the other places, but I just would hope that you continue to look at it and make sure you get the optimal space for, I mean, all the sun chairs being in a place where it actually gets sun in the afternoon. Because I would think more people would be out in the afternoon than in the, nine in the morning.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to move the pool fully, you know, in this diagram upwards, but maybe by rotating around where the lounge chairs are, they could be in a location where they got sun more often.
Anyway, something to look at a little bit.
Okay. So that's the pool deck. So the big, the big item on the takeaway was the family-friendly units. And I can, I think you can see by the diagram, we have managed to increase our two- and three-bedroom units to 55%. A lot of those units are oriented to the courtyard. And unit count is almost the same, 229 previously and 223 today. Okay. So we included the same matrix and went through it pretty judiciously. These are typical two- and three-bedroom units. And we called out the amenities and the unit features for each of those units by number. So dedicated dining areas, defined entry areas, side-by-side washer and dryers, full height linens, separate sleeping areas from the living, minimum 60-foot deck, large room for storage. And there's other things like the dedicated study areas and places to park, large closet to park strollers and bikes. The townhouse units that line the street, these are each two-story townhouse units. We have these units about 18 inches above the street level. With the kitchen, has been given some input on the family-friendly side of this. We moved the kitchen around and put it on the glass and sink as well. The living room, dining room, study area, and then the dedicated half-bath. We are currently taking a door from the back, from the corridor. And I know that's a discussion item. We can discuss that a lot, but we are doing that. Upstairs, we have two bedrooms that are located, and they do have windows. I know it doesn't show in the drawing, but there are definitely windows in the bedrooms. So those are the two-bedroom. I think we have two-bedroom and three-bedroom townhouses. And this is the permeability of the podium. I know we had discussions about being able to get on and off at multiple opportunities. The units that are oriented to the podium deck, the inside courtyard, have lots of visibility, light and air. And there's a good deal of permeability getting on and off of the podium from a variety of locations. I'd love to answer all your questions.
Thanks.
I just had the one and it was kind of simple. And looking at the plans, I couldn't see how you guys are securing the garage and where you're putting the zip car in relation to that. Because I know once it's inside a gate of security, it's kind of hard to get at the cars. So I don't even know if you'd really need to show me so much as saying that has been a consideration and that the zip car will be accessible, but the garage will be secure.
Here, put it on here.
Maru will come turn it on for you.
Technical assistance.
Okay.
So right here, we have a secured garage entrance. And then the first stall that you run into is zip cars. And then I imagine the customer for the zip cars would be entering the garage from this entrance.
Okay. So then the zip car user will use their zip card or something to access the secure doors and go in. So it's not an open garage at that point. They have to go in through a secure thing, okay.
I noticed on the roof plan, you have space for future solar. Why is it future? Why are you not doing solar now?
We're just going by the state requirement on the solar.
Yeah, I think, I think the state requirement is that we, we could plan for future solar. So what we're doing is we're evaluating, you know, that whole option of doing it, but it will be engineered and set up for it. And we're, as we're evaluating the next pieces of it, you know, that's something we could do potentially sooner or later, but it would be set up for it.
Okay.
The corner piece, I believe that's where you're calling for the aluminum windows. I think the plans said aluminum windows at corner only. And in this, in this rendering, you're showing them as if the, the frame of the windows protrudes from the face of the wall, which I like, but I'm just curious as, it looks like they're creating a shadow line. Is that your intention or are they recessed or what?
I don't think they were intended to be.
So yes, those aluminum windows will have those protruding objects that defines the frames. And then within, there would be aluminum, rear aluminum glazing that's operable for the bedrooms.
So the frame or something, or some metal frame will protrude from the face of the wall to create this sort of frame?
Right. So we need to develop the design a little further in order to know like how exactly the detail works, but that is our intention.
Cool.
By the way, Yoon is our designer on the project and doing an exceptionally good job.
Any other questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright, so with that, we will go ahead and open the public comment on this item. So if anyone would like to speak, please come forward. Alright, seeing none, we'll close the public comment and we'll bring it back for discussion.
Just a few comments. So I do encourage you to make sure that that detail continues. I think it's a key part of making that corner work. And also the metal fins further down Shell Mound, those were called out as painted metal fins that frame those balconies. And I think that's key as well. When I was initially looking at the elevations, I wasn't super excited, but then when I saw the rendering and the depth that that provided, I thought that was a nice element. Again, the, I think it's the units B1 through 3 are all kind of that dormitory-style unit again, which I think makes the ratios for family-friendly units sort of, it skews it unfairly when you consider those family-friendly units, because I don't think that that's really the way that they're going to operate or the way that they're designed. And the only other comment really was that some of the, some of the units, especially some of the three-bedroom units, seem like they need a little bit of refinement to streamline them. They're a little labyrinthine.
I appreciate the increase in the townhouses. I think that this is a better location for family-friendly than the one on the Shell Mound side, actually, being closer to the park and in a little bit more residential feeling setting. My comments regarding the layouts of the units are the same as they were for the other one. They do, I think, some of, a good number of them need to be rejiggered so that they are actually family-friendly with the configuration of the bedrooms being less like two adult separate residents in them. Again, I think that the townhouses are working okay and I think, I'm glad to see that there are more of those. The solar on the roof, I really don't think that apartments need that scale of signage on them, so I would really discourage having such a large illuminated sign on the, the vertical sign that's on the Shell Mound side. And other than that, I appreciate the refinement that's going on. I like the materials pretty much. I assume when you're saying painted metal, you're meaning powder-coated, right? Yeah, yeah, good. So aside from the configuration of the units, to have more of them be actually family-friendly, that's, that's my main concern.
Well, I've been fixated on the delivery truck issue for the market. And I've come up with a suggestion that the market parcel be reconfigured so the market goes all the way across to 63rd Street and that the apartments be pulled down to the west side of that parcel and pace on, only onto Christie Park. And that the 63rd Street may be made a little wider on the market side so the trucks can pull up parallel to the building rather than having to back into a loading dock. And they could use that entire length of the market as a parking lane for their trucks to unload and then pull out towards Shell Mound. At the same time, I'd recommend that the townhouses be moved from the 63rd Street side over to the 64th Street side so that there's no residential units facing directly onto 63rd. As far as the elevations go, I'd prefer to see the same color on most of the elevations and not all these variations. Other than that, I think it's a handsome building.
Well, first of all, I have a correction that actually should be on both sets of plans. And it's just a minor correction, but it's about transportation. And it shows that there on page A03, that there's an emer go-round stop in. And it shows that there, on page A03, that there's an emigrant stop in front of the Pacific Park Plaza Building, right at the lawn area, and there is no Emeryville, immigrant stop. They're all, the immigrant, all the buses stop at the corner where the project of Avenue 64 is, the transbay buses and immigrant parks there. You may want to show there is a casual carpool just to the south of the Pacific Park Plaza Towers that's heavily used, so you may want to show that in your renderings and put the bus stop in the, in the proper location with the other buses. On page one of the landscape plans, the sidewalk information is kind of inconsistent. On the far-left elevation, the top is marked as 63rd Street, but I think you actually mean Market Drive on that plan. And the sidewalk widths are located, and that particular plan from top to bottom are measured at eight and a half feet, eight feet, and eight and a half again. And the whole block to the right is shown on 64th is eight feet. I think we want to be consistent in the plans, but I think above all, we have to make sure that the clear walk space, not including planning areas and anything else, is at least eight feet all the way around. So that's the main concern, is to make sure that we stay consistent with our plans, that a free walkway of the whole place is at least eight feet, and that, when the plans come back, that they be consistent with what you're planning to put in there. So I'm talking the landscape plan, which is page one, and on the far-left elevations in the top is marked as 63rd Street, and I believe that that's actually Market Drive, that elevation. And the sidewalk widths are listed from the top to the bottom as eight and a half, then eight feet, then eight and a half again. In the whole block view, it shows on 64th Street as being eight foot. And then the changes I would like to see is, again, bigger windows on the bike shop on the east wall. So what you're showing is that there's a corner window, and I think what might be better is to put a bar, a larger window on the east wall to receive more light from the street and put the door around on the north wall perhaps. Since your bike parking, again, is way over the required amount, I'd like to see some bike lock, bike lockers in the bike room, spaces available from what I could see on the south wall and the west walls. And in the center section, you could probably use the triangular type, and if you need a link to accommodate those, I have that. And this might be hard for you guys to see, because I'm going back to the plans in January again, is I'm not pleased with the changes in the fenestration I see for the windows on the northeast, the northwest, and the southwest corners of the building. The windows seem to be in lesser quantities there, or lesser in size, and I just think it makes the building look closed off. So refer back to your plans from January and just look at the two differences, and I think the rendition you had in January was a much better look for that. And on the January plans, those were in page A5, 1, 2, and 3. So I agreed with Commissioner Gunkel on the, the metal framings that protrude out from the, the windows on the, the main corner. I think that's a real design feature. They've done that at a hotel or a inn in Berkeley, right across from the high school, and I think it's a really nice element. I, I'd like to see them not come out too far to where they actually block the people's view, but I think that's a really nice accent that's kind of contemporary, modern-looking, so I definitely agree with them on that. I still love the building overall. On A32 in the top left, I love the top-floor setbacks and the overhang on the bottom left of the townhouses, how the, the second story, that's kind of tucked under. I really like the, the difference in elevation on there and how they're set under the upper floor to the right of that in that rendition or that illustration. And I just love the elevation of this corner that we're looking at here. I just really think it's, it's magnificent, and I like the larger windows you guys are employing throughout the whole process. Living in a place with big windows, it makes a big difference. It's really wonderful. So overall, nice work. Thanks.
Yeah, I agree. I think this building looks, looks great. I really like it. Thanks for all the hard work on it. I will just repeat a couple of things that, yeah, I do think the, the, some of the unit floor plans need a little bit more work to, to make them conform with the family-friendly guidelines that we just recommended approval of. The, I really like the placement and utilization of the blade sign, but I could also support a reduction in its size, but in general, I like it. The, so I will say one thing, which is a very important point for me, is that the, the townhome units, I really like their placement. I like that you've, I think you've increased the number of them. They, given that all of the entries appear to be flush from the front, that interior courtyard is, is very much redundant, and I think that space could be added back into the units to make them larger. And really, a person coming from the garage would only have to walk about an extra 25 feet to get to their front of their unit rather than the back of their unit.
Wouldn't be handicapped accessible, though.
No, I think they would be. I think all of the entries are flush.
There's stairs. They show them right on.
But not on this side. Well, maybe I'm wrong. I'll, I'll ask the architect to clarify that in a second. Right.
Yeah. Let's see, the stairs. And, and the elevations show a little stairs, too.
Okay, well, we'll get clarification on that. I think that is, I think that kind of concludes my, my comments, so. Yeah, can we get, can you clarify that issue about the, the front of the townhome units?
Yes, they all do have steps, and accessibility is a key issue, and I'll get the code section for you, and we'll review it together.
Okay.
Happy to provide it. Okay? Thanks.
You could put a lift in each one.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, just getting back to the pool and your comment, I mean, it, it does, I would imagine most people, especially families, kids are going to be using the pool in the afternoon, and its current location is the shadiest spot in the afternoon in the courtyard. So it seems moving it further east would bring it into the sun. And I know that you'd be sacrificing maybe the play area to the shade, but it seems like a pool is, you know, it, it needs the sun a little bit more than the play area.
The pool needs to be sunny as much as the area adjacent to the pool needs to be.
Yeah, that was, that was my thought, too, is you could, you could position the, the pool and the lounge area, I mean, it's the lounge area that wants to be sunny more than the pool itself, right? So...
I would want to be in the sun in the pool, too, but yeah, I don't know. Depends on how warm the pool is, I guess.
All right? Yep, great, okay. Does the applicant, do you feel you have clear direction?
Yes, I think we do.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, then, with that, I think, so we, our next item is commissioner comments. Any, any comments from anyone?
I do have some comments to make, and it's unfortunately not very positive. I have to say that I'm really kind of pretty surprised at what we heard from the Ambassador Housing, and I really hope that Catherine, who is here, and everyone else kind of refers back to that, and we start looking at some resolutions to that. And it kind of goes to a point of what I'm saying, after we approve the 3706 project, that we're doing all these low-income standalone projects, and these are the types of things that I fear in those. And if these units were mixed in with a market-rate housing, those elevators would not be out of order for that. If there was an elevator out of that order along in my building, there would be a mutiny. And I think that because these people are low-income, that, you know, maybe it's just too costly to manage or, you know, compared to their income, I don't know what it is, but for that woman to have waited four hours to get into her unit, I, that's just, I'm just appalled at what's happening there. And I think we really need to look at that, and I think we need to look at that. This is kind of one of the reasons why I think if we intermix these things, we're going to have a lot less of these problems that we have when we put all these people on these islands. And I know I've talked to a lot of people about affordable housing, and I understand why it mix, it works as a standalone, and we have several of those standalones. I just think we need to start looking at making some differences and making options for people. Did you want to say something, Michael?
Yeah, I was just going to say, we do have a contractual arrangement with Ambassador, so we do have some tools besides just your regular regulatory tools, but we have some contractual rights to make sure that they take care of some of these things. I would also just note, I know earlier there was some discussion about the notion that smoking medicinal marijuana somehow was okay, notwithstanding the prohibition on smoking in internal residences, and actually, our ordinance, the way it defines smoking or smoke, it includes medicinal marijuana. So you are not allowed to, to smoke in your residence.
So we'll look into that as well?
Well, that is, it's more of an enforcement issue, but we've certainly already have had some communications with the, the owner and their, and their site manager about smoking issues in general, and medicinal marijuana use had not come up at that time, but certainly we'll look into that.
Very good, thank you. Very big problem.
All right, if there are no further comments, then we'll go ahead and adjourn.